Well, good morning. We'll get started with the Pledge of Allegiance and our invocation. Dennis Pendleton is the Chaplain at Epworth Villa Retirement Community, where I'll point out he has daily contact with a woman who we're very fond of here at City Hall, and that is former Mayor Patience Ladding. So please pass along our best wishes. I'll also ask Councilman Larry McAtee if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance following Chaplain Pendleton's invocation. Would everyone please stand?
Let us join together in prayer. To you, oh God, in this chamber of self-governance, we give thanks with grateful voice for the gifts of leadership you have given to those gathered here representing the people of our community of diverse backgrounds, every economic station, people of many faiths and people of goodwill, newly arrived and those long established. It is our prayer that in the discourse of decision-making and the give-and-take of negotiations to create a more vibrant community for our citizens, that there will be the willingness both to give and to take, that those with the most power may heed those with the least, that those on the fringes of society may hear the call to fruitful engagement in the creation of better lives for us all, because we believe that living in community is a sacred trust we share with you, oh God, our common Creator, in whose name we pray. Amen.
It's the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're on item 3A of the council agenda, and we start with a somber moment, remembering Clara Looper, who passed away just a couple of weeks ago. Clara was at the highest levels of leadership in this city, and we will all miss her. If we have a resolution, I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas on August 19th, 1958, Clara Looper, with two of her three children in tow, led members of the local NAACP Youth Council to the lunch counter at Katz Drugstore in Oklahoma City. When the group was refused service, the sitting commenced, and so too the movement for desegregation throughout the South. Whereas Clara Shepherd Looper, known by many as the mother of the civil rights movement, passed away in Oklahoma City on June 8th, 2011, at the age of 88. She was the middle of five children. She was born to Azelle and Isabel Shepherd on May 3rd, 1923. Clara Looper received a BA in mathematics with a minor in history from Langston University in 1944, and as one of a group of black students who integrated the University of Oklahoma in 1950, she earned an MA in history education in 1951. Whereas from 1958 to 1964, Clara Looper was a major leader in the fight to end segregation in Oklahoma, and she was personally involved with integrating hundreds of restaurants, theaters, hotels, schools, and churches across the state. Whereas the National Civil Rights Movement took Clara Looper beyond Oklahoma to make the 1963 March on Washington, where she was witness to Dr. Martin Luther King's "I Have a Dream" speech, and to Alabama for the 1965 March from Salma to Montgomery. Clara Looper was an educator for 41 years, teaching American history at several Oklahoma City schools, and she was one of a handful of African-American teachers hired to teach at Northwest Clasen High School as part of the highly controversial court-ordered desegregation plan in 1968. Whereas Clara Looper chose many paths along her journey, some that might be called ordinary, wife, mother, teacher, and others that many would call extraordinary, a seemingly fearless pioneer in the civil rights movement, a playwright, an author, and an American hero.
I'll ask for a motion.
Move the item.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. How about a round of appreciation for Clara Looper and the life that she led? We had the opportunity to welcome Ms. Looper in these chambers a handful of times through the years, and it was always a special moment just to be in her presence. The way she carried herself, the way she conducted herself, the way she discussed what she had done, and her pride in this city was evident time and time again. Any other members of council like to speak before we move on the agenda? All right, we will miss Clara, and we will pass along this resolution to her family. We're on to item 3B. This is a presentation by Gary Cox. Gary is the Director of the Oklahoma City County Health Department, and Gary and I and others in the community have been working on a Wellness Now Initiative. Gary, if you'd come forward, and I asked Gary to come down here and give a presentation to the council and the community about sort of a behind-the-scenes effort to get more organized in the well-being of this community, and Gary's done a wonderful job of coordinating it down at 23rd Street. Gary?
Thank you so much, Mayor Cornet. And we've got a few slides that we want to share with you, some information. It's really exciting things that are going on here in Oklahoma City, in Oklahoma County, and we have some real opportunities, I think, to make a big difference. We'll get this, yeah, I think it's coming up now. The initiative was started just a little over a year ago, excuse me, Wellness Now, and it is a community initiative to try to get a multitude of community partners together to work together to improve health in our community. I think that we all know that we need to take urgent action, because too many folks are suffering premature disease and premature death in our community. We also know that there's a strong economic impact. We know that good health is vital to the strength of our economy. And, you know, I think this is the first time, and we've been advocating for this for several years, this is the first time in our history that we have both a plan to improve health at the national level that just came out in June, at the state level, the Oklahoma Health Improvement Plan, and here in Oklahoma City and Oklahoma County, the Wellness Now Initiative. And so I think we all realize that if we're ever going to improve our situation, we really have to have a plan to do it. That's what Wellness Now is all about. Well, we all know, and we won't talk about this much, we all know that our health outcomes in Oklahoma are poor. We also, we know that if the statistics keep going the way that they're going, that within two years, we'll be the most obese state in the nation. We also know that in five years, if things keep going the way they're going, more than half of our population will be obese here in Oklahoma. We also know that that has terrific impacts on health outcomes, and that it's going to be responsible for a multitude of health problems that often lead to premature death. So where do we begin? Well, our department came up, the City-City Health Department, came up with a Oklahoma County Wellness Score, and this really shows you kind of where the health statistics are and where the health challenges are. In the dark blue areas, as you see, those are the ones with the most health challenge in those zip codes. The golden rod, or the kind of the more yellow color, shows the better health outcomes in our city and in our county. But what this helps us to do is this helps us to focus on areas that are in greatest need and to put some extra effort in those areas. Now, this is too busy to really tell much about, but it is in your handouts, and you can take a look at them, but this goes zip code by zip code, and it goes by all the factors that were put together to come up with this Wellness Score, all the way from education to chronic disease to cancer, mental health, transportation, and all of that, many of the things that the city, you know, the city has a responsibility and is working with. Some specific examples, if you take one of the better zip codes in the city and one of the ones that are more challenged in the city, 73111, you can see that there that mortality rates for cardiovascular disease is 10 times higher than in 73151 in northeast Oklahoma City. I mean, that's striking, 10 times. The disparities are 10 times as great. If you look at diabetes and cancer, the rates are about seven times higher in 73111 as opposed to 73151. It's truly shocking in my mind, because it's not only loss of life, shorter lives, more illness, but it also translates to economic, lack of productivity economically as well, by shortened and not healthy lives. If you also do a comparison on the median family income, you can see a striking difference between those two zip codes. We do know that poverty rates do have a big impact on health outcome. That's why we need, one reason that we need so many folks to work as partners to help improve this situation, the business community is just critical, the private philanthropy and others are critical in making a turnabout. Now, as far as the vision, we can become a healthier community, but in order to do so, we have to have a new vision. And really, we have some of the finest medical care in the world here in Oklahoma City, but that's still not getting the job done, as good as it is, because we're still not able to have good health outcomes in relative to other areas of the country. So we know it's something besides good medical care that makes the difference. So we feel that we have to make the switch from a sick care system to a wellness system, one where we're preventing disease and we're keeping folks well. And by doing that, we think we can really make the biggest impact, and we have a lot of opportunities for that goal. I think the overall goal and the concept of Wellness Now is that no one agency or entity can make the difference to make things change. The City-City Health Department can't. The City of Oklahoma City can't. The county can't. No one acting alone can do it. It's going to take all of us working together in a systematic way. Well, what are we doing about it? And that's where we really like to focus. And we know we have challenges, but I think the important thing is what can we do about it? Because one thing that I've noticed about this community, it's resilient, it's positive, and folks really want to have a good community and really make a difference. And I think that the Wellness Now effort provides a comprehensive strategy and a framework for pulling partners together, focusing on priorities that are going to make a real difference. We know the things that will make a difference in improving health. We just have to prioritize those, bring the right partners to the table, and get folks committed to really making a difference. We have a coalition includes a lot of folks, Mayor Cornet co-chairs the initiative, County Commissioner Ray Vaughn is the co-chair as well. We have a list of about 55, more than 55 partners already, even though the effort is new. It ranges anywhere from Sisters in Motion to the business community, to the Chamber of Commerce, to Martha Burger with Chesapeake, to Reverend Young with Face Based Initiatives, to Carl Springer with Oklahoma City Public Schools. And so it is broad-based, but we want to make it broader. Again, we have over 55 organizations joining together, and philanthropy certainly understands, the Board of Health understands, and they're fully committed to making a difference. And we really want to get the biggest return on investment that we can in our community to move health along. The approach, we, our group, and we brought together different groups, a broad group of stakeholders, and we held meetings throughout the community to get input on what are our priorities, how can we make a difference? And these are the six items that they came up with, six different work groups, and there's a work group for each one of these items. And if you really just take just the top three, tobacco, obesity, which is diet and exercise, as we know, and mental health, if you just take those top three, they are responsible, if you look at it from a lifestyle standpoint, they are responsible for 65% of premature death and disability. So if we're going to make a difference in improving health, we've got to focus on tobacco, diet, exercise, mental health, which would be substance addiction and alcohol addiction and things of that nature. That's where we can really make a difference. We also know that there's some upstream or cross-cutting issues that we have to be concerned about. It's not all cut and dried, but policy development is huge. We need to work with employers. We need to work on health equity in making sure that folks get access to prevention and wellness services citywide. Here's just some example, in just a little over a year, some of the successes that we're beginning to have, and I think these are focused on things that are really going to begin to make a difference. There are two school-based wellness hubs. One is in Millwood, and the other one is in Jefferson Middle School. These are the first comprehensive wellness hubs in our city. Wellness Hub would just be, we have a comprehensive set of wellness services, health and wellness services in this school. Eventually, it'll start out with just that school and the school kids. Eventually, it'll go out to the parents, and then eventually from there, it'll go out to the community surrounding that hub. And so we need more of these. We have very little in Oklahoma, very little work with the kids, and that's really where we can make the biggest bang for our buck, is starting with them. I always like to say it's never too early to start, it's never too late to start, but the earlier you start, the more success you're going to have. Cardiovascular disease, we're just kicking this off in 73111 this month. This has tremendous promise. We know that by combining a screening process, a treatment process, and using coaching and case management of public health, we know that in other communities, cardiovascular disease deaths have been reduced by as much as 25% within two years by doing this comprehensive approach. We can make a difference here. If we can save 25% of lives lost to heart attacks in this zip code, that would be very significant in terms of human terms and economic terms as well. Certainly, we want to work with our seniors as well on fall prevention programs, and we've got a number of partners here, and we work with partners on all of these. Now, one of the most exciting things that I think is going on, and it's an exciting opportunity, is we have purchased 54 acres of land at the intersection of I-35 and I-44, and the plan is to have a health and wellness campus, not just a health department building, but through bringing partners in, have a true campus here that is focused on, not on sick care, although there could be some sick care there, there could be some doctor services there, but focused on keeping folks well, and not only the public health, but it could be primary care services, it could be mental health services, it could be literacy, health literacy services, and there's a planned walking trail around this site with exercise stations. And actually, this site, three of the trails that are on the master plan go right through, intersect right through this property. So there's terrific opportunity there as well. Sports fields for kids, soccer fields, baseball fields, and other things to let kids be active, to focus on activity and wellness. A demonstration kitchen where we can bring in kids in the community into this area and show them the proper way to fix healthy foods and healthy meals. An auditorium for the community to get together and talk about health issues and to do some training and planning. I could go on and on and on, but we've already talked to at least a dozen potential partners that we would like to bring on this site, and we think it could truly be a national model to show the nation about what we can do when it comes to place, when it comes to place, the place part of improving health and focusing, refocusing on wellness and prevention, keeping folks healthy. So there'll be more detail coming about that. If there are potential partners out there, we'd love to talk to you. As I said, we've talked to a dozen or more, and we'd love to talk to other folks that want to focus on wellness and prevention in kind of a comprehensive way. Now, we certainly need your help, and we very much appreciate the things that you've already done. For example, the smoke-free resolution that you did. Of course, the mayor is leading the effort. Councilor Shadid is going to join the effort on the executive committee, and so we appreciate the things that you're already doing. But we do need you, because, you know, we'd like for you to be vocal about this project and how successful it can be. We're going to sit in your speeches and your community meetings, and we'd be happy to provide some talking points if you, that you're interested in that. And of course, we want your feedback and suggestions on how we can do things better too. Now, policy, public health policy. It's the most powerful thing that we can do in public health to improve health, and usually it doesn't cost a penny. It doesn't cost one cent. For example, you've done the smoke-free resolution. It didn't cost anything to do that resolution. And so by the policies that you make here, and by the different departments that you have in the city that are so influential, and by the decisions that they make, that can be so very important in improving health. And so we'd like to ask that you consider on major decisions, considering throughout the city, what impact will these major actions have on either positively or negatively on improving health? And you're already doing such a terrific job. I know your city planners work with us very closely. They're doing a terrific job. They get it. They understand the built environment and all the public health portions of the planning and the transportation and all of that, and we so very much appreciate that. But we can do more, and so it's going to take all of us taking that extra step to improve our health outcome. Well, again, this is a little bit, a little bit busy, a little bit much, but there are many benefits to all of us to improving our health outcome, both in terms of human costs and in terms of improving our economy and being competitive economically. And we need community buy-in and support. We need your buy-in and support, and we think that this will be an opportunity to really stand out nationally, to take an area that we do have health challenges and really turn it around, as the mayor's efforts are doing, and many of your efforts are doing, to make a real positive difference in, on the city. Thank you so very much, and we are happy to provide you with any material, any information that you might need, and we very much appreciate your support as we move forward.
Gary, thanks very much. I will point out, last week, I was able to visit our fitness camp that our Parks Department is putting on, is again, is sort of a trial project, second year we've done this. And our police department showed up and gave a martial arts presentation. It's probably 50 or 60 kids, including me, going through calisthenics. And then our police department gave a mentoring program on bullying to the kids, and it was just a really nice combined effort between our Parks Department and our police department, combining wellness and education and a summer program for kids who might not get this information or opportunities to exercise any other way. We are doing things, as Gary points out. We just need to do more. I mean, we have, this is at one recreation center, and we know we have pockets all over the city that could benefit from things like this. And if funding's available, I hope we're able to find, you know, more funding for our Parks Department to get their kids out of their houses and into our recreation centers where they can enjoy more activities, and especially the opportunities to interact with our police officers in proactive and positive manners. Questions for Gary on Wellness Now? I know we wish you well, Gary, and we want to be a part of this as we go forward, and we know funds are tight at your department and in our department, but we also know that the hidden cost of healthcare and the lack of wellness in our community is costing us dearly on the other side. No question that our money we better spent upfront committing wellness as opposed to trying to take it on as acute care later. Yeah, Larry and then Pat.
One quick question. In forming this whole program, a large geographic area of my ward is in Canadian County. Was there any thought being, any thought given or any thought being given to doing something to reaching out into the other counties that also serve our citizens in Oklahoma City?
That's a good question. I think it makes a lot of sense to do that, and by working, and we can work with the other counties. We know those health administrators in the other counties. I think it really makes a lot of sense to cooperate on a regional basis, because, you know, what most folks, many folks that work in those counties work in Oklahoma City. They come here to work every day, and so I think that's an excellent suggestion and the one we can follow up on. But I think it makes a lot of sense, because county, city and county boundaries are just that. They're just artificial boundaries, and folks are going to go back and forth between them, and we need to, we need to keep that in mind.
Okay. Pat?
Thank you. You're on the regional health and wellness campus that you mentioned?
Yes, sir.
I think that's a great project. You said they have acquired property?
Yes, sir.
At I-35 and I-44.
Yes.
What is the status of the actual construction, though?
Of the construction, okay. We've completed the purchase of the property, 54 acres, and we're working on plans now, and we anticipate that construction will begin, at least on our building and on the trail and some of the outside things, October or November, and we are hopeful that the construction schedule will be about a year after that time.
But you have the funds?
Well, and we have identified funds. Of course, we, through our reserve funds and our savings, that's how we paid for the property to begin with. And we do have funds, and it's a kind of a multitude of financing mechanisms through revenue bonds, through our reserve funds, and hopefully, quite frankly, through partners. We're hoping that partners, both private and philanthropic, will come to the table. That's just going to make it more larger and more opportunities there, the more funds that we have. But we, we're going to, it's going to happen, and the funds are there to make it happen. It's just how good of a local and national model can we make it, and the opportunities there to make it a gem for Oklahoma City.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments for Gary? Gary, thanks very much for coming down today. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mayor Cornet.
Items 3C through 3F are a series of appointments. I'll ask for a motion on the group. Comments or questions on these? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 4 is Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for June 21st. Item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for June 14th. Comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 5 is requests for uncontested continuance.
Yeah, just a few this morning, Mr. Mayor. Starting on page 27, page 27, under item 8Ei, 81, excuse me, 81. Item B, 2111 North Everest, we need to rework that for additional violations. Item F, 3101 North May, that should be stricken. The owner has secured. Item J, 4111 South Shields, we ask that that be stricken. There's a new owner. Item N, 1101 Northwest 11th Street, we ask that that be stricken. That is now occupied. Item O, 2432 Northwest 13th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item P, 2439 Northwest 13th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has now secured. Item Q, 1332 Northeast 16th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item R, 1223 Northeast 18th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item S, 3200 Southwest 18th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item W, 1509 Northwest 30th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. I guess those notices are working, going out and securing their properties.
Sounds like it.
Item X, 1201 Northwest 33rd Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to rework for some additional violations. Item Y, 2445 Southwest 38th, we ask that that be stricken. We need to rework that for additional violations. Item double C, 2200 Southwest 48th Street, we ask that that be stricken. We have a new owner. And item double J, 1205 Northwest 105th, we ask that that be stricken. To rework for additional violations.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances?
Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like for us to consider continuing both items 8, G, and I today. We're missing two councilmen. Both of these items are of extreme significance to the city. The last time we cited a convention center, we've lived with it now for 50 years. It seems to me that all the council ought to be present. I did receive a phone call last night from Councilman Shadid, who was stranded as a result of an airline mix-up in Boston. He very much would like to be here when both of those items are voted on. I know there are people here to make presentations, and I believe we should go ahead and hear the presentations. But I would respectfully ask the council to defer both items until the entire council can be here in two weeks.
Would it be appropriate to wait until we get to those items and then start off with a discussion on whether or not we should defer them and take them individually?
Yes, could be.
That'd be all right? Yeah, I'm asking you or anybody else.
Sure, be all right with me.
Come on. All right. When we get to those items, we'll discuss upfront on those two items whether or not we should defer, and then we'll move forward from there. Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, let's assess the council meeting convenes Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority.
Second.
All right, looks like there are 10 items. Any comments or questions on the MFA?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, just minor things. On item F, MFA-F, this is a worker's comp claim, and it was settled between the parties. There was mediation, and we agreed, the parties agreed, to a 28% partial disability of the left hip and an 8.7 permanent partial disability of the low back. In the order from the judge, he failed to address the low back injury, 8.7%. Does that take it off the table? Or do we, is there a possibility that it'll come back sometime and we'll have to reopen this case?
Laura Johnson, I think can answer that. And there she is. Laura, did you follow the question? This is on MFA-F, and it has to do whether or not that this-
I think what I heard, the question was, does it take, does it resolve the claim? It fully resolves the claim.
And so the fact that we had an agreement between the parties, that agreement's null and void to the extent that it addressed the additional disability associated with the hip injury?
The, I'm sorry, I don't, the agreement is that the judge awards is the final adjudication of that claim.
Okay, so the agreement that the parties entered into becomes null and void then at that point, and the judge's agreement, judge's decision becomes the principle or the guiding-
Yes.
-limits on that?
Yes.
Okay. So it's off the table. We don't have to worry about it coming back to haunt us sometime?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on MFA, Pat?
Yes, sir, on item J. This is a group of attorneys who are prepared to help with the cities. And one of the attorneys on there, James R. Moore, is also representing collective bargaining units in, at least in our current negotiations, I believe all three. And I just wondered if that was a potential conflict of interest that we had to look, need to look into.
This, Mr. Moore has been with our panel for a number of years, and to my understanding, has no pending litigation against the city. So I don't believe there's any conflict.
Well, but he's listed here, and is he, does he get a retainer to be on this list?
No. What happens is when an individual, and usually he would be representing probably police officers, when an individual is sued and is determined, either they're sued for punitive damages or, and/or a conflict of interest arises, then the city, then the individual and the individual requests representation, they request from the panel, and then the council determines that they're acting in coursescope, and at that point in time, they're approved.
Okay, but the write-up says we enter into retainer agreements with various attorneys.
Yes.
And they list a bunch of attorneys. Are all these attorneys being paid some retainer to be on this list?
Only when they're, only when they're representing us on a particular case. And at that point in time, that, yes, they're on retainer, but when they represent us on a particular case, they will be compensated as per the retainer agreement.
But there's no retainer fee?
Okay.
No individual fee?
Well, I have a question, and it's always been kind of puzzling to me. If a person represents an organization that's part of the city of Oklahoma City, are you saying that it's not a conflict or appearance of a conflict if that same individual ultimately becomes a legal representative for that same organization? But at the same time, you're saying that he's representing the city of Oklahoma City?
He's representing the individual who is-
I understand that, but the individual works for the city of Oklahoma City?
Okay.
And we hire individuals to represent the city of Oklahoma City, and then you place individuals on a list to represent the individual also? And you say that's not an appearance of conflict?
I'll have- I'm Tina Hughes, Assistant Municipal Counselor. The comprehensive retainer agreement list was formed by recommendations from the various employee groups. But at the time Mr. Moore joined that list, he was not representing any of the unions. And he has never had a case that he's drawn any money on this retainer agreement for, at any time. There's not necessarily a conflict if he were to represent an employee over something that's just not a union thing. Generally, they're being sued for civil rights violations where they're accused of doing something that's outside the scope of their employment. They're, the employees are allowed to get outside counsel because the allegations are that if the plaintiffs prove what they're alleging, the city would not be able to take care of their, any judgments against them. And in cases like that, if that judgment is found, then we wouldn't even probably pay for their representation. That really doesn't happen, but I don't know that there's a definite conflict there. The issue has not arisen. They would be looked at on an individual basis, and none of the attorneys on that list can represent anybody without council approval.
I assume that's why Councilman Ryan asked the question in reference to our approval. But the list is already made up. And I, my concern here is, is that it's always a shotgun call, it seems like, when you want to say it is a conflict and when it's not a conflict, without a real uniform policy as it relates to what is a conflict of people representing individuals within the city of Oklahoma City and also representing the organizations such as the unions. And I have absolutely no problem with the union representation. But it just seems like that there is an unfairness as it relates to that same individual having a contract with the city of Oklahoma City, and at some point in time, when you get to a bargaining and a collective issue, that's the individual that sits on the other side of the table.
The things that they bargain for in the union negotiations really, I don't know how they relate directly to a lawsuit of this type.
I don't think they relate directly, but I just think it's the appearance of the name being in here that suggests a possible conflict of interest. I think the process we've got in place is fine. It's just, you know, we've got a nice list of lawyers here, competent lawyers, I'm sure. And James Moore is clearly a very competent lawyer. He does an excellent job. I'm not questioning his abilities at all. It just seems like that the mere fact that his name was on the list to do work for the city when he's not working for the city on a regular basis, it just seemed like there was an appearance of a conflict, a possible conflict of interest.
Thank you.
And if the legal department's comfortable that doesn't exist, then I'm comfortable with leaving the name on the list, although it does seem a little bit strange.
I can tell you that before those items come up to you for anybody's representation, our office will already have looked at that issue and have made a determination on a case-by-case basis.
How is the list, I mean, who makes up the list?
The list is, a lot of those people have been on there for years and years and years. Very few of them actually do any work on this contract. The newest people who have been added to that list have been recommended by police and somebody else represented, recommended a couple. I know Patty High, for instance, was recommended later. And then we check, we take a look at their qualifications and what types of cases they've handled in our office and add it to the list if we determine that they have the kind of background that they would need to represent people in those cases. We would also look at conflicts at the time they're added, but once they're on the list, we generally do not lead, take them off the list unless there's some affirmative direction to do that.
Pete, do you want to say something?
Yes, aren't the, wouldn't this arise where a city employee was sued as a result of something they did, and therefore they're entitled to legal representation? We must provide representation to them?
It, that's part of it, but the thing that really trips them over into being to look at outside counsel is that the allegations against them also include-
And the allegation against the city also.
-bad faith acts that would take them outside of the scope of their employment.
But if they're entitled to counsel, as they fit that category, and they're entitled to counsel, they're also entitled to pick their counsel.
From the list, yes.
From the list. They couldn't pick someone else? If they wanted somebody else, they couldn't get somebody else?
That'd be a council decision, obviously, if somebody pushed the issue, it'd bring their counsel.
That's my point.
It has happened, but not-
Probably hasn't occurred because these people are all experts at this.
And it's about this.
But if you wanted, if you wanted one, you could get your own counsel. A council resolution could be approached. We could, we could address a council resolution. And if you could count to five that day, well, you could get your own lawyer. Who would you pick?
Yeah, these people are-
This is the delegation on the part of the city to represent these people-
Yes, sir.
-if they fit into this category.
Yes, sir.
So it would seem to me the likelihood of a conflict would not arise between the city and the people on this list in this issue. The potential would be greater for the conflict to arise between the attorney selected and his client because of his other connections to the city. I don't see how he could have a conflict with the city in this regard, but he certainly, if he wouldn't, if he wasn't careful, he could have a conflict among the other things that he does. That's just the way it seems to me.
That's quite possible.
When I think about the fact that they're entitled to counsel if they fit this category.
And there's a 1997 council resolution that provides for this-
Right.
-this program to work like this for this very reason.
I mean, because a conflict just does not arise based on, I mean, there has to be an actual conflict.
There has to be a potential conflict, and the potentiality of the conflict is based more on the petition by the person who's suing.
Well, but if you take that to its logical conclusion to, there has to be a potential for conflict, then you wouldn't, you couldn't have a list and you couldn't pick a lawyer because there's always the potential for conflict. Integrity's the only thing that stops conflicts. Rules don't stop them.
The plaintiffs are bound to what they've alleged in their petitions, but they can amend those and change the situations and bring a conflict into the mix, yes. But they invariably list itself that there is a conflict.
Gary?
Well, as you so often do, you've spoke about this long enough now, you've raised a question in my mind. If this, if we're simply approving a list that the employees can pick from, should they require outside counsel, but they don't receive any monies until they actually pick that counsel and the case is brought up or whatever, does it then still have to come to counsel to approve monies to that lawyer to defend that?
Yes, sir.
Then why are we doing this list?
It's more of an internal process because we've got relationships in place that actually follows the provisions of a process resolution passed by the council back in 97 that sets out this process for the city.
And my question was based on maybe perhaps a misunderstanding on my part. When I read that, a retainer agreement, retainer in my mind indicated there was some payment made to those people for them to be on the list.
Yep.
And since that's not the case, then I, my question probably isn't as valid as it once-
I mean, why can't we have a list?
The people on this list have agreed to restrict their activities in ways that are set out in the litigation agreement, which is a separate item, but they get a copy of that, too. It holds down the costs to the city. It designates exactly how much everybody makes per hour, which is substantially below market rates.
That's why we do the resolution that I've lit.
And it requires them to do some additional reporting back to us that they wouldn't normally have to do.
It also provides some process. If an employee comes in, you know, he doesn't have to just pick any attorney in town. We've got people that are familiar with the process. We've got the rates done and people that have expertise in this area. So it makes it a little bit easier for employees, also.
Okay.
The other thing is the-
So you're telling me that-
-counselors look at it. I'm sorry.
But basically, you set the rates that the individual is going to receive if the employee selects this particular attorney off the list?
Counsel does. It's in the litigation agreement, yes.
I would like to see the litigation agreement because-
Is that not attached? It's not a part of the packet? I can certainly get your copy. I thought it was in the packet.
It's not with mine, but anyway. So you, we set the amount that this attorney is going to receive, and he agrees not to charge anything over that, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And that's how these individual names are acquired to be on this list? Just those individuals who would agree to do that? Because there's not any open bidding that's announced that gives individuals an opportunity to come in and make application to be on this list, is that correct?
State law does not require it, and there isn't that process.
Also, attorneys are exempted from the professional services, RFP processes, as well. This panel has been developed since the beginning of the resolution. The municipal councilor's office has reviewed the panel, determined they're qualified, and the negotiated amount, which, by the way, through the last many years, it's been there, it's been very nominal. As you can tell, the rate is extremely reasonable. And then we have a process in place, and then each time there's a request by the department head for representation after the employee request, and it gets on the docket, a resolution is approved, authorizing that, that certain attorney from that panel is then authorized to represent that person.
Ready to go? I'm not sensing a deferral or that this item be pulled or that Kenny review it further. I think we're ready to go on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Tina. Adjourn OC MFA convenes Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Adjourn OC MFA, convene the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are seven items. How many are questions on the PPA?
This is a question on form, Your Honor. On the PPAF, which is a fairgrounds project, when they list source of funds on this, does that source of funds refer to the specific item we're dealing with or is that the total project?
I'd have to look at specifically, Mr. Ryan. I'm not sure.
Okay. They show a $65,000 source of funds from the motel motel tax and then they show some money from the 2007 revenue bond. And the entire change order was $65,000 referenced in the source of funds from the hotel motel tax.
Yeah, I'm sure that's the program or the project.
And what happens to the, that's the total project then or just specific item?
Laura, can you help me on this? On the memo, when the project sources are listed, are they only for the change order or are they for the entire project?
Is this the fairgrounds item?
Yes.
It is the total project.
Of the total project then, was it $65,759.70, the entire contribution to the project from the hotel motel tax?
No, I'm sorry. The source of funds was, is for the whole project. That amount is just for the, for the item. I'm sorry, which one are we on? I don't have it. I believe that that's just for the actual item.
Yeah, that would make sense because the numbers are exactly the same, but then they reference the 2007 bond issue.
It's the 2007-
Fairgrounds bond issue.
Fairgrounds bond issue.
Not the geo bond issue.
Okay, thank you.
Which is, which is kind of, it's, that is funded by, that's paid off by hotel motel receipts. So it's kind of-
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Ready to go on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Adjourn the OC PPA, convene the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There is one item. All right, we have a motion and a second on the EAT. Ready to vote? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Adjourn the OC EAT, reconvene the council meeting with a consent docket. All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any individual considerations on the consent docket?
Your Honor, just a couple. On A and AB.
All right, anybody else?
We do have a presentation at some time. Mr. Mayor Curtis Brown from Goverre Engineering is here to do a presentation on the preliminary report for the lighting improvements on the Oklahoma River.
And that would be item BK. This is an item that was, council has approved the contract back in December and there's another item on here today, but it's kind of the front load of MAPS III project in anticipation of an exciting event that'll be hosted in the Oklahoma River, I believe it may be next summer?
Yes.
If not next, maybe it is next summer. Okay, my memory was better than usual. Pat, why don't you go ahead and get started with item A and AD and then we'll have the presentation.
Thank you, Your Honor. On number A, I'm just curious if we knew roughly how many of these rescue units we're going to buy?
Amy Simpson just walked in. Can you answer how many rescue units the fire department is anticipating purchasing on item A? Chief might be better, I know he's around.
Yeah, I'm really not positive. I could check on that and let you know.
The chief's around, let's get some from him.
It's not a big issue. I was curious because it sounds like it'd be nice to have a lot of these around because they're rescue units, but anyway. On AB, this is an annual roofing contract and it, I wanted to make, you know, make it clear what kind of roofs we're talking about replacing under this contract.
Right now, there's no plan to purchase another unit. We wanted to keep that contract open and available in case we do. So we haven't made that decision yet, so I couldn't give you any kind of number, but we would just look at our upcoming placement program and make a determination.
So you would use this primarily as replacements and not additional units?
No, this would be an additional unit.
Okay. How many of these units do we have now?
Two. We've actually, when I gave my report to council some time ago on the status of our ladder, aerial ladder fleet, I made the point that we were buying some of these light rescue units as kind of a trial to allow that ladder company to use that unit and save wear and tear on the bigger vehicle. So this is just, again, a furtherance of that concept that we're trying. We have just received another one. So we have one in place now in the northeast part of the city. We're putting this in the southwest part of the city, the one we just recently purchased in the southwest part of the city. This just helps us keep that contract open in case we needed to purchase another one and felt like we-
So you have two now.
Yes, sir.
And you, chief, do you plan to purchase a third one?
We're looking at that. Again, this is kind of a concept that we're continuing to evaluate and if we decide to purchase another one, which we very likely might do, we wanted to make sure that we had the availability to keep purchasing it the same, on the same contract.
Thank you.
Okay, now on the roofing contracts?
Yes.
This isn't yours, chief. Laura.
Yes, which one is this?
AB or?
E.
AB, Alpha Bravo.
Alpha Bravo.
It's a $400,000 project, a $4 million project to replace roofs. And I think that's fine, but I wanted to, some clarification on what kind of roofs would be eligible to be replaced under this, but we wouldn't get a lot of calls from the public asking us to replace the roofs.
Actually, I'm going to defer to the public works director.
Councilman, I believe we're just talking about roofs on city buildings.
City projects.
Yes. Again, we have authorization beyond that, but if we have a situation like we had last year's hailstorm, we had some fire stations that were damaged, we had some rec centers that were damaged, and we have a contract then for the availability to repair those roofs.
I know, we have in certain areas, we've done some rehabilitation on private structures that are dilapidated is part of our-
Right through our housing program.
The housing program.
This is not what this is.
Totally separate from, okay, thank you.
All right, we have a presentation on the river racecourse lighting improvements.
Curtis Brown is here from Goverre Engineering. Thank you. Pleasure to be here. I'll try to go through this very quickly for you, but if you have any questions, feel free to please interrupt me during the presentation. I'll expand on the elements. Again, this is a progress update for the racecourse lighting improvements project. The scope of the project is, basically, the last thousand meters of the racecourse, starting from the Byers Bridge, running to the thousand meter mark, which is in between the two I-35 bridges is the racecourse area. We have a proposal to do a base level lighting for the day-to-day practice and nighttime practices and then event level lighting that they want us to pursue for televised events or other high-profile events that may need to happen. The lighting layout, we have about 21 light pole locations staggered on both sides of the river. The light pole locations are the same for either the base or the event. All that happens are additional fixtures are placed on top of the pole. No additional poles are required for the different lighting levels. And we have 10 major points of service. We have six on the north bank, four on the south bank. All of these will be linked via wireless connection instead of a hard-wired cable all the way throughout, just because the distance of the racecourse and the infrastructure, the wireless was by far the most economical way to go to control all of these lights and these systems. And all of these will go through a central hub located in the finish line tower over there on the north shore. The lighting control system, again, is that wireless touchscreen-based system and is expandable for future systems. And by that, not only the base level, event level, future aesthetic lightings, possibly can expand for television and audiovisual PA systems as well. And so it'll be a modular system where you can just expand in more slots on the system and this controller and access those menus through that touchscreen. Also, the system will work with the remote control, basically through an iPhone app where you can access these same things and be able to control on the ground some of these features also through this application as well. And so just make good use of that wireless technology for this system. Typical poles, about 110 foot tall, looking very similar to what's here in this graphic. Lighting level determination, just a little bit of the engineering, the, there are no nighttime lighting standards for scoling, kayaking, or any of these kind of venues. This is a one-of-a-kind, state-of-the-art facility. Nothing in North America even comes close. And so we really had to look at other venues, other types of things to try to establish lighting standards. What we're looking at is a baseline practice level about 30 and an event level lighting about 75 was our first pass. Kind of put this in perspective, a NASCAR racetrack is lit at about 30 to 35-foot candles. A baseball stadium infield is about 140-foot candles. A typical office building is somewhere around 50, 55-foot candles, kind of give you a feel for what these numbers really kind of mean. So 30 is kind of a dimly lit living room, for an example. To validate these lighting levels, just because there are no standards to really see what was up, we did a mock-up on the river about a few weeks ago and we actually had a professional TV camera set up, flat screen, and videotaped the results of this so we could actually see what it would look like on a camera, what the aperture settings were and all. And through this mock-up, we realized we're a little bit conservative in our lighting levels and ended up actually reducing those down to a practice level of about 20-foot candles and an event level of about 40-foot candles. And that's what's recommended in the report. The graphic, what this looks like, a 40-foot candle lighting sample from that mock-up, you can actually, once you guys concentrate not as much on the scolder there, but the river itself, you can see the river is well lit. It's got, it's a natural color to it. And again, the rowers have great visibility on that. As you go to the 20-foot candle for the practice level, you can see the river's a little bit dimmer, but you can still see the boats and the athletes very clearly and as they're on the water, they can see it well. I'd like to thank Mike Knopf. He actually put a camera on the boats as well so he can actually see the view from the athlete's point. And I have a 40-foot candle lighting example here where you can, again, see the river is lit very well. The athlete has a great view all the way down the river where he's going in this practice area. As you go to a 20-foot candle, you can see the river is a little bit darker, a little bit more shadows, but still very safe environment. The bridge is lit up well. He can see where he needs to go for the practicing. But when it comes to the television, that 20-foot candle, the cameras are pretty much at their maximum aperture setting and so should other ambient lighting things come in, they won't have the flexibility to get you the highest quality HDTV and 3D TV broadcasting. So we wanted that 40-foot candle for that high-profile event. For standard television, that 20-foot candle is going to be insufficient. Same with the practice. Now, that's kind of the recommendations of the base plan. We had some coordination items on this, obviously. One of the big ones with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, they were actually present at this mock-up. We actually set up the mock-up next to the I-35 bridges at one of the desired pole locations so they could actually see the impact on traffic and what it would look like. They were very, very pleased with the results, given us verbal approval, and we're just waiting for it to go through the channels to receive the official letter of acceptance of our proposal and where we want to go. Same with OGNB. Obviously, we're not going to be able to light the river without their participation and bringing in power to those 10 control points. We've been coordinating extensively with them, just finalizing the easement locations and final locals. They are not going to need to build any new facilities. There was a regional concern that they may need to build a new substation or something to support all of this, but based on our preliminary numbers, everything looks real good. They're very pleased, very willing to work with us and be proceeding forward as we just complete our design, able to fine-tune some of those details. Preliminary cost estimate for lighting the 1,000 feet of the river, all the way from the bridges back, we're looking at about $2.5 million. That's with engineering fees, other professional fees, and a project contingency in there. And that's for the base bid, which is the practice level lighting only. The project budget was about $3 million and so we're well within that on the practice level. As part of this study and the coordination with the other river projects, we ended up with several design alternates that we wanted to present to you. And actually, we had nine that were discussed in length and four, all those are in the engineering report, but four are actually recommended alternates. I want to very briefly run through those. Most of these are due to significant aesthetic and functional benefits to the boathouse district and the inability to incorporate these alternates at a future date. And these alternates are the high-profile event lighting, it'd be very desirable to do that now. Realignment of the north shore light poles, I'll talk about in a moment. Changing the array from a rectangular array to a triangular array, a more architectural presentation of the lights, and then presenting a warranty for these light poles as well. High-profile light, we talked about going from 20-foot candles to 40. Basically, instead of having two rows of lights, there'll be four rows of lights on the top of each of the standards. Each of these pairs of rows will be on its own circuit, so through the practice, you can have either top rows or the bottom rows and extend the life of your system. What we're looking at is roughly about another $873,000 to go from low event to high event, bringing the total project to about $3.4 million, which is slightly out. Realignment to the north shore poles. The light poles on the north bank are originally located roughly about 35 feet away from the shore, but due to the future boathouses and the aesthetics of being able to stand in those venues and the glass things and looking down the river, those poles are in the line of sight of several of the future boathouses. In fact, the westernmost two poles have actually been moved back to about 90 feet because of the impact with the finish line tower and the existing Devon Boat Tower and the view obstructing that from the judges. So there's a strong desire to go ahead and move back all of those poles back to 75 to 90 feet. As we move those back, the poles get higher so they have the same striking angle on the water and also we have to add some additional fixtures in order to maintain the same intensity and so that increase the project cost. This would basically keep everything on the north shore all set back at a uniform distance of between 75 and 90 feet from the lake shore that all the poles would be in the line and creating an unobstructed view from all the boathouses. And to set these things back, we're looking at about $558,000 extra. And again, each one of these alternates, I kind of present the grand total as we go through, but these alternates do not have to be chosen in order. They can be one and three or two and four can be chosen. They're not dependent upon each other, so you can mix and match the numbers. But if we chose this alternate, hand the base, we're looking at right at $3.1 million or both alternates together, about $3.9. Triangular fixture array with the space frame. The whole boathouse district has a very unique architectural concept to it and there's a strong sense of identity created by this and there's an opportunity to enhance this through the light fixtures. It helps continue to work on the destination aspect of this and keep the focal point of the site, especially as you're driving down the bridges, these lights really draw your eyes to the boathouses. This change in configuration actually adds some additional fixtures in order to complete the rows and that's what caused most of the additional expense. But also, we're going to put a light structure, space frame around this triangular arrays to support the future aesthetic lighting, LED lighting that would go around these lights as well. So that infrastructure would already be in place to facilitate that future project. The triangular array of the lights would look very similar to this graphic. Instead of the standard rectangular array that you'll see at the ballpark, it's a little bit more pleasing and I think it offers great aesthetic benefits. Cost estimate for this is about $740,000. And again, it seems very rich for just adding some lights, but again, we got 21, possibly 22 light poles that we are modifying and at about $1,000 a fixture, it adds up very quickly. 25-year warranty is the last recommended alternate. The cost of these warranties are often offset the cost of the routine on-call maintenance by really over more than 50%. What we're going to do is do a bid alternate requesting the vendors to provide an extended service warranty of, for about a 40,000-hour performance period with seven group relamps. What that means is they'll change out all the bulbs on the entire racecourse seven times throughout this warranty period. They also will maintain the bulbs because as they burn in, they lose a little bit of their luminosity and so if you just change out one or two, you also can get hot spots. And so they'll manage that to keep you from having hot spots and go through and that'll be all part of the warranty period. We're looking at the cost of this warranty- We're looking at the cost of this warranty being about $287,000, and that's for a 25-year period, and just the cost of individual lamp replacements is easily double this, and so we felt that was a very good value and wanted to recommend this to you. I went through this report very quickly. I'm sorry, I have one more thing. Schedule drivers on this. Coordination efforts with the other boathouse district projects have been a major driver on this. We're trying to make this a cohesive project, not just jump out in front and set up some light poles, but really make this where it meshes with the whole master plan, and so those coordination efforts have been driving it. One of the other major schedule impacts is the lead time on the manufacture. We have about two and a half months from the time that this material is purchased, the time it's delivered, and so in order to try to set a construction schedule, that's a major schedule impact. And then also, just a legal process of getting agreements through ODOT. Now, I don't aim for right-of-way, but we're going to be hanging some lights on the bridges. We have the technical part taken care of, but just getting the agreements drafted, going through ODOT, going through you guys, and for approval, and the legal departments, just takes a little bit of time. We have a schedule for the first part of the project, where we're looking at moving forward and having the lights for the whole racecourse set up in June. We are trying to phase this project, where we can get the last 500 meters operational prior to the second 500 meters, so maybe by late April and May, we can have nighttime lighting for some of these sprint rowing events as they're completing the construction and going through, and so the phasing will be very important as we go through this project. We're looking in May-June timeframe is our anticipated construction schedule and time for this project to be operational. First, take your time, and would certainly entertain any questions? I know I went through very quickly.
Comments or questions? And I'll remind the council and anyone listening that this has been approved by the MAPS-III Subcommittee on the River and the Advisory Board. Yes, Pat?
Which did they approve? Just all the alternatives, alternates, or just the base bid?
They approved the preliminary report, which puts them all out to bid, and so after the bids come in, then we can know what the hard prices are, then we can make decisions on which ones to recommend at that point in time. So, they'll come back with some recommendations on which alternatives after the bids are opened.
Because it didn't seem like the alternatives had equal value, there were some that may be more important than others. That's just a personal opinion.
I'm personally correct.
Any comments or questions? It's an exciting project, thank you.
Yes, it is, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the consent docket?
Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment on BN, which is the contract with Variety Healthcare concerning the Lafayette Park project. I know, I see Georgie here, and Lafayette Park was one of the stops on the neighborhood tour a couple of weeks ago, and understand, got really good reports from the people that looked at it. It is a much different facility than most of our park projects, it's small, it is, but I think it's really going to be something to watch, both from the standpoint of the depth of the community involvement, we have multiple partners there, and also, from the kind of a park that it is, the kind of facilities that are there fit very well with the wellness concept that we heard this morning in the presentation from the City County Health Director. There's a lot of things in that park facility that you just don't see in parks, and I would encourage all of you to go by and take a look at it, because it really is kind of a cutting-edge idea. Time will have to tell whether or not the facility itself will be utilized the way we hope it will, but it certainly is, all the landscaping is in now, and it really, really looks nice. Besides that, I went to grade school there, so.
And it's still standing.
It has special, and that's right, it is still standing. It has special significance to me, and, but I would encourage all of you to go look at it, because it can be a real demonstration for what we can do with small areas in terms of making them very, very viable, and not just a park for children playing, I think it does a really great job of that, but it's also a park where adults can utilize. It's very, very, like I say, very cutting-edge park.
David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Pete, I'd just like to echo those comments. I've had some feedback from people who have business interests in the area, and they're all very impressed with the initial designs, and I think it's just going to enhance that area of the city, so I encourage us, whenever we can, to continue those types of projects.
And Mr. White, Mr. Dover's here? Pete, Mike Dover's here, too. Probably should recognize him.
Mike has been a real stand-up partner in this process, I tell you. Without Variety Care's piece of it, it wouldn't have worked, but Integris has been a partner, the county has made its best effort to be a partner, hasn't been able to do much yet, but I believe in the future they have a plan to do that. But without Variety Care and without Mike Dover's leadership, that would not have been happening, and I should have seen him out there and commented on that.
Ready to go on the consent docket?
I have a question, Mayor.
Okay.
On six U. This is the contract with the Capital Medical Center. The amount of $12,000 from July 1st through June 30th, 2012, has that been the standard fee, or is that based upon a change over periods of time in reference to the amount of services that we've had to provide?
It's, I'm pretty sure it's the same as last year's rate. I can get maybe Susan Miller or Russell to come in to take a look and see whether or not, when's the last time that changed? I think it's pretty close to full recovery of our costs, though. And Bob Teener? Okay, I was wrong again.
That contract price has been the same since we started it in 2007.
Has our services been the same?
Yes.
We haven't increased anything in reference to citations?
Well, the number of citations varies, you know, by violation, but it's been the same service that we provided through the length of that contract, and we renewed it every year for the same price, the $12,000.
That's probably something we should look at going forward, Mr. Councilman, to make sure that we are, that contract is in line with our costs.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Sensing we're ready to vote on the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Move on to the concurrence docket. I know we have a presentation coming up. Is the presentation on K?
It's on the downtown elementary school.
That's K, then. All right. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the concurrence docket, but we have a presentation coming up on the site selection process and presentation of the downtown elementary school called Forward in MAPS for Kids.
And Anthony McDermott is here to do that.
Morning, Mayor. Good morning, Anthony. City Council. Pleased to be here. My name is Anthony McDermott, I'm the principal with TAP Architecture, located at 415 North Broadway in beautiful, and getting more beautiful every day, Oklahoma City. We will walk you very quickly through the process that we used to come up with recommendations today for your, the new site for downtown elementary school, the new downtown elementary school. The process was, involved three meetings of the ad hoc committee. The ad hoc committee was made up of two members of the community at large, from among you, Councilwoman Zalier and Councilman Bowman, former Councilman Bowman, two members of the MAPS Trust, and two members of the Oklahoma City School Board, plus staffers from the Oklahoma City Schools, and staffers from the MAPS Office. We had a series of three meetings, which we called workshops, at our offices at TAP, and went through a pretty rigorous and highly structured evaluation. The process involved evaluation of 12 sites that were originally identified as potential sites for the downtown school, and that list increased to 16 during the process, and then whittled down to three for final consideration, and then our recommendation. The first workshop really concentrated on identifying the unique assets or the unique qualities and potential assets for a downtown school. We also worked quite hard on a definition of downtown. As you know, there are many definitions of downtown, but for the purposes of the school, we involved the ad hoc committee in redrawing the boundaries of what we consider to be downtown, and proximity to assets that we thought were important to the school. We also ran the program, this was right in line with the standard process. For a 500-student-capacity elementary school, we studied what that means in terms of space and size, and we did what we call a test fit for a one-story, two-story, or three-story option for a downtown school, to basically get our arms around what that looks like in terms of size. And on the screen, you'll see the gray line represents a downtown city block, a typical city block, and the gray represents streets in a typical city block. So, you can see that a one-story school option overlaps the block limits, a two-story option sort of somewhat fits within, and then a three-story option does fit within a city block. These are not, at this time, although we are retained to design the school, this is just a mechanism for us to get our arms around how big that site needed to be. As I said, we looked at the definition of downtown and what that meant to this ad hoc committee. This is the boundary that's defined by the Oklahoma City Planning Department. We felt that was too large as a committee and in discussion, and so we redrew those boundaries, and we'll take a look at that in a moment. These were the original 12 sites that were considered. During workshop one, we actually added four sites that the committee thought would, also needed to be under consideration, and then we took a look at all of the assets that we thought could be potential enhancements to the location of the city, of the new school downtown. The red, the bold red line here represents what the committee thought should be a definition of downtown. In other words, the school should be located within this heavy red line. Also, you see represented up here, for our planning purposes and for our information, bike routes, underground tunnels, the new, the railroads, of course, bus routes, and also, you see here, represented in blue with the letters, the potential school sites that were under consideration, and you also see numbered 1 through 16 assets that we thought were important in the consideration of the location. These are, this is not an exhaustive list of the assets, but these were the ones we thought were probably the most important. Then we used criteria of the proximity of the assets to the site, the size of the site, and the surrounding uses to the site, and we used a very simple color key to apply to each one of those criteria. The red, obviously, was a negative, the green was a positive, and the amber color was a neutral. So, we ran through all the sites, looked at the criteria, assessed them, and in workshop number two, we obviously eliminated some of those sites from consideration and promoted the sites for further consideration that we called Tier Two sites. We then identified other criteria, a lot of other criteria that we wanted to use to assess the sites, and these are among them. You'll find these in your report, but they included, of course, safety and cost. Then we quickly moved to the evaluation based on more exacting criteria to the eight finalist sites, and at the end of that process, and at the end of those evaluations, we actually came up with three sites. We, we, we came up, to be exactly correct, we came up with four sites. One of the site's owners was an unwilling seller, and so we came down to three sites. One was the site owned by Okura, that you see represented on your left at Sheridan Walker, which is currently the parking for Holder-Flinkco and the Devon Tower. The middle site is the Sheraton Century Center, which is known to, known to most of us as the Sheraton Century Center, Sheraton Century Garage. And then the third site, which was the sentimental favorite, was the originally Oklahoma High School, later known as Central High School, later known as Southwestern Bell, and now Farmers and Ranchers. But those were the three that came, that came under a lot of scrutiny in the final analysis, and after some vigorous, vigorous conversation and debate within the committee, the unanimous recommendation was for the site at Sheridan Walker. And I will say that, that, that the criteria that we applied most rigorously to the selection of that site were the proximity to the assets and the potential to enhance the education experience for those students, the size and physical characteristics of the site, it is, does not have any improvements on it, it is basically ready to go. Accessibility, as you know, it's less than two blocks from here, so I think you all understand the, the issues of accessibility and ease of accessibility to that site, and then the cost and ease of acquisition. It's currently owned by Okura, who have not actually taken official action on this, but by all indications are a willing seller, and actually very enthusiastic about the selection of this site for this use. That is the recommendation of the committee.
Anthony, if we went on a normal timeline, when would the school open to the public? Any ideas?
We are, we're looking at the end of, I'm going to look over my shoulder here to Eric. I believe we're looking for late 2012, early 2013. Is that correct?
Based on some of our previous construction, if we fast-track the project, we think it could be open as early as the fall of 2013, but more realistically, it's probably 2014. If we look at a normal school year starting in an August timeframe, we're looking at opportunities to advance that to the 2013, but a lot of things have to go very quickly with the acquisition, with reading the site. Obviously, with the approval of the site today, staff is authorizing the architect to proceed with the designs, the design won't be the holdup, we believe they can actually complete the design, but we've got to go through all of those criteria. It is a new building, the design's not yet started at all, so we don't have the schematics done, we don't have the community meetings started, so that's the process we need to go through.
All right, thanks. Anthony, probably either one of you can probably answer this question, but Anthony, since you're the one making the presentation. I think, you know, many of us, for, as you said, sentimental reasons, were hoping that the Oklahoma High School, or the Central High School, would work for this project. At the end of the day, was it the cost of obtaining the structure, was that the problem? And the idea also that it was outsized and a little bit of a tough fit, just made it a non-starter?
Yes, Mayor, for all those reasons you just stated. It was a combination of the acquisition cost, we have approximately a $10 million budget for this project, so the acquisition cost, which was eight to 10, but also, if you've been in the facility, you know that it is really set up now, since it's, since its significant renovation under Southwestern Bell, it's set up for a single-user, a single-user corporate office, and to, the size of the building also is way bigger than the program for the school. So, we had the challenge of buying more building than we needed, you know, compartmentalizing it for use as a school, and all the costs associated with that. It was literally cost-prohibitive, and it was the sentimental favorite on, for many of the committee members. It just wasn't, it was so beyond our budget that it was not feasible.
When you look at a design for a downtown elementary school, do you anticipate it looking different than a typical suburban elementary school? Are you anticipating a different type of design?
That felt like a slow pitch. Yes, we do, we do anticipate it being a totally unique project. I think everybody on the committee, and everybody that's followed the genesis of this school through the entire MAPS process, has great expectations for this school to be a unique opportunity. a, a unique opportunity, given its proximity to downtown and all the assets. Not just the proximity to the physical assets, but the proximity of the, the folks within those assets to get to the school.
Multi-story?
It looks that way right now. It sure does.
Okay.
So what's, what's the square footage, this projected as far as the size of the school, if the old Central was too big?
Old Central, councilman was well in excess of 100,000 square feet. This school, the program, I do not recall the exact numbers. It was, we believe it was, it was about half, maybe less than half, of the available square footage within that building.
Mayor.
Yeah, Pete, and then David.
I have a couple of comments. I, I guess the mayor expressing his disappointment that the old Central could not have been picked, disappointment's too, too mild a term as far as I'm concerned. I, I think it's a tragedy that we weren't able to do that. To miss the opportunity to risk, to return that building to public use, I think is something we will regret it. At least those of us that are concerned about the preservation of those kind of assets in Oklahoma City, I think we're going to live to regret not doing that. The cost thing, you know, that's all relative. We just had a presentation, we're going to spend six million, five million dollars lighting a river. I mean, cost is all, what you think's important, public education, you know, maybe it's not worth $6 million, but it would seem to me that it is. I would also question the, the comments that you made about the unanimity of your board, of your selection committee. You may have had a unanimous vote, but you didn't, it wasn't unanimous emotionally, I can tell you. I've had the opportunity to converse with at least four members that, that were on that board, and they were as sick as I am about it. And why they voted yes, I'm yet to understand, given what they said about what, how they felt about it. But I, it's a, I think it's a sad commentary that we're, that we're doing this. I'm, I want to vote for it. I'm like those people that were on the committee that said that, you know, I don't have a choice here today, there's not, I guess I can pull it off and vote no, but, but I'm not going to do that. But I, but I, I want to express my, my disappointment that an opportunity like this has been missed. We're, we're missing them in Oklahoma City, it seems to me, far too regularly. We're opting for a solution that may be a great short-term solution and solve some current view of how things are, and we're not looking at the long term. And, and I, you know, I looked over your studies, and you talk about proximity to assets. One of them is that you listed as you're going to be close to is the State Center. I guess you hope that you've got, you know something the rest of us don't know, that's going to be something that's going to be valuable to the school as opposed to something that may not be valuable to the school. But, because all the, all the comments are, that's going to be torn down. It, it's going to go. But it was factored into the process for making that site a better location than the other site.
It was-
Well, I mean, I could go on and on and on, I don't want to nitpick it to death, but, but I believe it was a site driven by things that are, by somebody, some force wanted that site, and that's why it's there. I think we're going to see that the rest of the day. But I think there is something going on that is not necessarily in the best interest of all of us in Oklahoma City. I think decisions are being made based on a very narrow viewpoint of things, and I think this is just one more of them. I'll shut up.
David? Well, a couple of questions. One, and not to disagree with Pete, I mean, I, I recognize the historical significance of Central High School. And I don't know this, but I would think once Southwestern Bell took over that building, they modified it to the extent that it, it really has changed as far as its ability to be used as a school. I don't know that it, I'm sure it could be changed back to where it used to be. But my point is, or my question concerns the boundary of what your committee considers downtown. Secondly, the population that's in that boundary. And I could see us, this school serving a very diverse makeup from an economic standpoint. I mean, especially if we went further south or further west. Anyway, could you tell me, could you go over the boundaries and, and the number of, of the population of that area?
The councilman, the, there are really, there are two answers. The first answer was that the red line, the red line represented a definition of downtown beyond which the members of the ad hoc committee didn't feel the school should be located. So it has nothing to do with the catchment area.
Okay.
The catchment area for the students is very much under debate right now and was outside the scope of our, of our study, really. I mean, the site, the-
Okay.
The site selection process did not really take into consideration the catchment area for the students for the school. I think that is still under discussion, and, and Mr. Couch has a comment.
Counselman, there is a group that's trying to, to go forward with a charter school concept for the downtown school. And part of the debate that's going on between the charter school group and the school district as, as they're negotiating this are the boundaries. It's anticipated to be a combination of people that live within a specific boundaries around the school, along with the ability to bring students in from, from employees that are working downtown. And the mix of that is something that, that I just know is being debated at this point in time or being negotiated, and I don't believe they've come to an agreement at this point.
I think that provides a great opportunity for the students, and hopefully the parents too would recognize that, to have such a diverse student population would be great. And if your committee could encourage the teachers to allow the children to utilize the myriad gardens as much as possible during the recess breaks, I think that would be a, a great benefit for them. I would want to go to school there and be so close to downtown. I think it'd be fun.
I have a question.
Yes, Skip.
Actually, to state it. It seems as if we're going forward with a project that's really just about a hope and a prayer. And the reality is today, there are no numbers that's within the downtown area that fits the need of a downtown school. The population is not here. And if you go outside of this red line, then obviously, you know, this should be a school that should be open to everyone in order to get the capacity that's necessary to justify spending $10 million on a brand-new school that if you look at the downtown area today and you look at all the housing, and you get up at 6 o'clock in the morning, you watch the doors, and you watch the cars, and you see how many children you see leaving from downtown Oklahoma City going to any other school that's within a five-mile or 10-mile radius of the downtown area. And so, yeah, what we're asking is that we're, we're hoping that people will move to the downtown area and start bearing children that will be of school age to go to school there. I mean, at some point in time, it just seems like that, you know, we're, we're building projects and hoping something comes to it as opposed to allowing the population to get to the points that you can justify the need for building a school. And I look at this from the school's perspective, and you look at all the schools that they have closed in the last year. And the reason why they closed those schools is that they said that it didn't make economic sense to keep those schools open because the population had decreased in the school and you started merging schools and consolidating schools. And here, we don't have a population, and we're going to build a school. It just don't fit. And, you know, this red line, I'm trying to-
I appreciate your comments, Councilman. That the scope of our, the scope of our project was to find the best location to locate a downtown school. The actual population for the school was way beyond. We're not educators, and we're not demographers. We're architects.
Anybody else comment or question? By selection of the downtown school.
Well, yeah, and maybe this is for Eric. At, at one time, there was a discussion on this downtown school would also be combined with the new administrative building or the movement of the administrative building. And it, it looks like this is just a school. Does that mean that, that the administrative building is still going to go somewhere else?
So there's still two projects. We are still moving forward on the district administration building, and right now, we're currently studying the existing facility at 900 North Klein. There was an opportunity with the Central High School to co-locate both of those facilities, but again, it was still cost prohibitive even when those were located together, trying to function in that larger space. And so, no, the project is still moving ahead.
So this is just a grade school here?
But this is just a grade school.
They've always been separate projects, but there have been a couple of attempts, attempts to combine them. One is with the General Record Building a few years ago, and then we looked at it, it wasn't even close with the elementary alone, but when we tried to put the admin and the school together, that's when it got, not, it didn't get to where, it could be a recommendation, but it got closer under that scenario.
Was there a consideration with, or was there a, a study of the old Central to use it also as the administration and also grade school?
Yes, and actually, TAP Architecture, as a part of the, the report that you have today, looked at that. I think one of the things that, that you haven't seen on the inside of that building and something that has changed since it was actually a high school, Anthony made one of the comments, it's too large just for the elementary. And when that was identified very early, the focus then was to combine both those programs to try to take advantage of that underutilized space. One of the challenges that's still in that building, if you've not been in there, is there's a three-story atrium that's now cut through that center core that didn't used to exist. The old auditorium, you can still see parts of it, but it's been completely renovated to offices, and it really is a, a, a very high-end office space. Converting that back to the elementary is nearly impossible. It's very difficult, but it's almost to the sense of impossibility just because of those three-story atrium, and it's big. It's, it's large. It's much, it's much larger than most of us might think if you've not visited that. So with that, it was just cost prohibitive from, from several factors of trying to return it to, to school use. But it was studied.
It's not dissimilar from the MAPS project at the Civic Center in that we had to really gut the interior and build a brand-new performing arts center inside that 1937 shell. You almost would be in a similar project mode if you, if you went to this high school because it just does not in any way resemble the same building it was.
So my, my question, I don't think you answered it. If you did, I didn't understand. With the administration building being in the school and the grade school, was that too much of a, of a financial challenge to put the administration, if you're going to go back to, to, to Klein and renovate that building?
The answer is yes. It, it was cost prohibitive even with the office co-located with the school.
How much is it going to cost to renovate the building that the school administration is in now?
That's currently being studied. The budget is a little more than $3 million that's been set aside for the district administration project. And so that's something that the architect is working on currently, and we're expecting a report in the next month or so. But we, we don't know. I mean, that's, that's underway at this time.
Anthony, did you, I understand you correctly when you said the acquisition cost of the old, of the Central High School was between eight and 10 million dollars?
The councilman they asked him, price was 10. We believe that it probably could be acquired for eight.
So you got $8 million invested in this project before you do a single bit of remodeling or rehabilitation?
Correct. I, let me, let me, let me assure you, there was great emotional investment in the selection of the old Central High School. I toured the building, top to bottom, with Jim Berkey, who, who, obviously, staff on Oklahoma City School Board, for Oklahoma City Schools. And, you know, we looked at, we looked at that project, co-locate those two functions. We looked at it 16 different ways from Sunday. And, you know, it was, it wasn't just slightly cost prohibitive, it was dramatically cost prohibitive.
Ready to move on? All right, we're voting on the consent docket. Any more comments or questions on any item listed?
No.
You're right, it's the concurrence docket. We have a motion in a second. All right, cast your votes. Concurrence docket passed unanimously. Thanks, Anthony.
Thank you.
We're on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. We start with a series of zoning cases. The first, item 8A1, is a zoning case in Ward Eight. The address is 16300 North Council Road. It's currently double-A agricultural. It would become a planned unit development. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. May I just, anybody sign up to speak on this project? I see the only representative, Dennis Box, is here. Dennis, could you give us a brief description of the project and answer any questions the council may have on it?
My name's Dennis Box, 522 Callcore Drive. This is a project, the owner actually owns the property shown as PUD 1277, and also owns the property that runs all the way to Rockwell. This will be an expansion and will allow for commercial development, but also service-oriented uses along the south and the east portion of the property. And if you all had a chance to go out there, adjacent to this is a tree farm. So this is a property we've had no objection to, and staff recommends approval, and Planning Commission did also.
And you've agreed with these additional conditions here?
We do.
And I understand the easements has been submitted, have it in hand? I would move approval.
Second? We have a motion in a second on item 8A1. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously?
Thank you very much.
Do you need emergency assistance?
Well, on item 8A2, this is a zoning case in Ward Four. The address is 9700 South Sunny Lane Road. It's currently double-A agricultural. It would become a planned unit development. Pete, we have one person who has signed up to speak.
Is that a protestant?
I don't know. Chris, could we have, first have your name and address for the record, and you might pull that down in front of you. Uh-huh.
Okay. Chris Abbott. I live at 9601 Southern View Drive.
And are you here to protest this zoning, or are you here in favor of it?
I am here to protest, I believe, but I'm not 100% sure what's going on, so I'm also here to be more informed.
Okay, well, you can reflect your comments to Councilman White.
I'm sorry?
Councilman White is your councilman, and will help you deal with it.
Thank you, Mr. White. I, I wasn't here at the last hearing. The, the date was changed repeatedly, and eventually, when there was a hearing to, to change this, that I, I guess I missed, so I'm not too sure where we're at right now. I was actually volunteering in Piedmont, it was the day after the tornado. I live in the property number seven there, and I appreciate that the owners of the land, either the former owners or the current ones, have done extensive cleanup of that property. But recently, I, I noticed to my concern that there was some runoff from that land onto my property. I went out to water my peach and pecan trees that are at the back of my property, and there was some bright orange dirt. All of my dirt is kind of lowland, is dark brown. And, and I don't know the proper technical names for all this, but I have dark brown dirt, and I see this white orange dirt. At first, I thought all my grass had died, and then I realized it was dirt. I followed the path, and it ran off, sorry, this, this land that is the subject. What concerns me is that I, I don't know what's going to happen as a result of the approval of any industrial activity on there, except that it's going to impact me, and it's going to impact the, the land that I grow my food on, in addition to the value of my property and, and the enjoyment of that property. And I never realized that that would happen when they, all they did was clean off some junk that was dumped there, and now there's dirt washing straight onto my land. So my main concern today is just to ask that you consider that when you make your decisions today.
Why don't we ask the applicant representative to make a presentation and then give you an op, the applicant's present, representative is here. We'll let him make a presentation. If you have questions, could actually ask him or ask me to ask him, and we'll, we'll try to figure out how it's going to work.
Thank you.
Good morning. Dean Dyes, Commercial Promits Express. Yes, sir. What can I answer for you?
She raised some questions. Can, if you can just-
Can, if you can just start out by trying to address those. You and I have talked. I talked to some other people that protested originally. There were other people that were not necessarily sign protestants, but had concerns. I talked to them. I don't believe I talked to this lady. I talked to some other people that lived behind there, and they must be satisfied or didn't know, or didn't find out we were going to meet today, or for whatever reason, they're not here. But... I spoke with this lady myself the last time. We had the continuance. I called her on the phone, told her about the continued date, told her the new date, when it was going to be set, and that type of thing. That was for the planning commission. And no one showed up at that time.
Why don't you then tell her what you've done to modify it from the first, from the first application to now?
Well, all the things that we originally talked about, like the 100-foot setback from the property line, that was made, that's one of the items that we've agreed to. As you well know, they went in and spent the money to have the garbage and all that cleaned up. I'm assuming that that little red dirt that you were talking about from earlier, that is what we call red select. And when they dug that hole out and cleaned all that out, they may have used some of that to pack that. That's a better packing material than the brown spongy stuff like you would normally have. So I'm assuming that that's where that orange dirt come from. Nobody hauled anything, you know, additionally, and other than just when they cleaned up that area. So I'm assuming that that answers that question for you.
My concern is that it shows that whatever happens on that property is going to run straight down onto my yard. That's my concern, tomorrow, what's going to happen tomorrow?
In that regard, they have, they've used a device, a land-use device called a planned unit development, and they have stricken from the normal uses that an I-2 property would have, a number of uses. I'm looking through my file here. On page two, have you got, have you have a copy of it? No, sir. She can see the things that are left that the property could be used for. You have a copy of the staff report, Mr. Dives? I'm looking for that. I have one, if you want to look at this. Yeah, here we go. I can assure you that the list of things that can be done in I-2 zoning is much, much longer than this list. They've just reduced it to these items. Well, you're talking about the uses that can be used on the property. I think that's what she's talking about. I think her question was, what is there that can control her not having any runoff on her property? Is that what you're referring to? The city code, you know, allows for that. It within the, and it's in the same report right here that he just gave. First of all, they're not allowed to drain anything off their property onto your property. There would be detention required and everything else on their property to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Right now, it does drain onto my property. I mean, there's nothing harmful drain in that, so, you know, the rate at which the water's draining is obviously faster than it was.
Has it always drained there? Or did this occur as a result of the construction work that's already begun?
I would have to say that it has always drained, but probably more slowly, because you can see dirt washing off of there. And that was probably the vegetation holding it back, and the land, I don't, I think they've leveled it out some.
The legal requirement is they can't do anything to increase that. So if it's always drained, they don't have a requirement to remediate a drainage problem that might have been there normally. But they do have a requirement to make sure that the flow's not increased by the way they do it. For example, if they put hard surface there, they're going to have to find some way to retain the runoff from that hard surface, so as not to increase it on you. And that, they're bound to do that by city ordinance.
I would say that it has already increased somewhat.
That's as a result of the construction that's already started?
Just by the leveling and the removal of vegetation has increased.
They will have to remediate that as part of their, the city ordinance will require them to do that. Although, I don't believe this requires detention, onsite detention.
On the uses, if I may ask a question, tell me if I'm going out of order. When it's got these auction, to me, that indicates a lot of outdoors noise. Would there be restrictions on when they can do that?
In reference to what?
Automotive auction is the first item on the list.
We removed all of the items that would create an outdoor noise, such as speakers and that type of thing. And they're also listed in the items there that we are agreeing to. We did that at the planning commission. We removed all of that. And they specifically stated that they would not, that they would prohibit outdoor speakers, and that they would install an eight-foot-tall site-proof fence along the east that would taper to a six-foot site-proof fence along the north and south. So there's some effort being made to shield it from your home, probably better than you have now because of, you don't have anything now, I guess, right?
And do we know what materials they get to build the fence with?
Well, it has to be site-proof, and it can either be wood or it can be metal. Now, we did discuss doing a metal fence across that backside. Would you prefer to have it out of something else?
Well, you know, wood might be less unattractive than metal. Metal looks kind of industrial, but I appreciate that it might not have the longevity either. I'm not an expert on these matters. But, yeah, I don't know that I want to look at something that looks like a big old storage building at the back of my, you know, she's...
What is your property zoned?
Where is it?
No, what is it zoned?
The zoning is agricultural.
Okay.
We each have one house on five acres, which I believe is what they specified to the developer that...
Well, I think you're right to be concerned about and asking the question.
Absolutely. I think the wood would look better than the metal, just between me and you, but that being... Most of the industrial that's zoned there presently all fronts Sunny Lane. It's very industrial on Sunny Lane, not a lot of industrial zoning, a lot of heavier zoning than this will be. This, as my understanding is, this property owner owns property that fronts Sunny Lane? Yes. So it is an extension of a use that's already, of property that's already on Sunny Lane and already zoned. Actually, the front part of it is zoned higher, for a higher intensity industrial use than this planned unit development will be.
Right. And I understand that, but if you look at my property, number seven, it's bordered on all four sides with agricultural when we bought it.
Right.
Right? And so, extending that property back, it's really, it's not having an impact on anybody on Sunny Lane, but it does on, like, three sides of that property. Those are all agricultural.
Is your property higher, lower, or about at the same level? You're lower?
The property's lower, yeah.
Well, you're going to have a little bit of a drainage problem no matter what. If you're lower, you're always going to have that. Because you are lower, though, the visual aspect of it is not going to be as impactful on you as if you were higher looking down into it.
Well, what we've noticed is that when we look back out of our properties, as the, as the land rises, you see things, so like, say there's an eight-foot fence, things that are six-foot high behind it, you can see those because the property keeps going up. I don't know if I'm using the right numbers, but we can see things as they go up.
You can see the six-foot fence that's already there?
There is not a six-foot fence there, but on the, if, looking at this picture from the property, the subject just above it, the trucking company has extended out to that fence line, and they put in an earth berm, and they park their trucks right up against the berm, and you can see all of them above it. You can see them all.
Actually, the report calls for, at this present time, there's not detention, but if there is new buildings built and hard surface, there would be detention required. Would you consider a restriction, a building restriction, inside your property line, say 15 feet wide, that would further buffer it from her property? Now, say that one more time. Just a restriction, add a restriction to the PUD that says that you cannot, that you'd have to retain a green belt at least, say, 15 feet wide all along that west side? Oh, yes, that'd be all right, the green belt. That's, can we do that from here? Bob?
There already required a 100-foot buffer from her property.
100 feet already?
That's right.
Yeah, back at the back.
I imagine he would agree to 15 then. Good negotiation. I sound like the Democrats in the Senate voting.
You could make it 115 if you wanted to.
No, I don't want to do that. No, it's already 100. I should have already known that. I apologize. I should have already known that. They can't do anything within 100 feet of that fence.
Okay.
So that was part of the, that was part of the earlier negotiation. That was the original negotiation back day one. So they're building the fence, and then they can't get within 100 feet of that fence. So you've got a pretty substantial buffer there.
That's sensible.
Probably about as good as you're going to get.
So, to some of my understanding, they can't do anything to increase the runoff. They have to mitigate that if there's an increase in runoff. They're not going to have outdoors noise, and, like, speakers and so on.
Well, in order to use the property, they're going to have to put something on it.
Sure.
Once they put something on it, then they come under the purview of the detention ordinances. That is, if they hard surface the parking area, if they build a building, if there's already some runoff problem, once they start to utilize the property, start to develop it, then that's going to come to fore, the fact that there is a runoff problem, because it's downhill. Obviously, I think the city would have picked up on it anyway. But now, under these circumstances, I think that's going to be in the file, that that's a runoff problem. And I think you have a better opportunity to voice that, or the city will ensure, I think, that's not a good word to use for the city. The city will make its best efforts to make sure that there's not a runoff problem that is exacerbated by what they do on the property.
Okay. And then you build a fence, and you can't build up to 100 feet of it? That's the one. Okay. I see. I got it. Okay. That makes sense to me. Thank you. Appreciate it.
We appreciate you coming down.
I'm sorry?
We appreciate you coming down and helping us.
I understand. I live in double-A zone property, and I have this feeling that forever I'm going to live in double, and there's nothing going to be close to me that's not zone double-A. I know, after living there 30 years, that's not the case. At some point in time, some greater density development's going to come. But I think this is about as good of an arrangement as we can make, when you consider what's going on to the east of you, how industrialized that portion of it is. I think this is about as good as it's going to be to protect the lifestyle that you pick for yourself out there.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Pete, you want to make a motion on item A2?
I would move approval.
All right.
All the technical violations have been met, have they not? Everything's done?
We have agreed to all the technical violations.
I move approval.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
And I'd also like to move the emergency.
There's seven of us. The work? Cast your votes on the emergency. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Item 8A3 is a zoning case in Ward Seven. The address is 1935 Northeast 7th Street. It's currently R2 medium-low-density residential and C4 general-commercial district. It would become a simplified planned unit development. Skip?
Yes. I've talked to the developer on this. There's one recommendation that I would like to see if I can get an explanation from. Bob, if the developer's not here, a representative. Is it Ron Walters? This is Ron's development, right? Can you just explain to me, the site plan should be amended to show no limits of access to Martin Luther King or along Martin Luther King?
Site plan's been amended where you can't take access onto Martin Luther King. You'll have to come off of 7th Street or 8th Street for their access.
Was any reason why you couldn't have access off of MLK?
There was concern about conflicts with the traffic on Martin Luther King. See, they'll have a, they'll have a street there, but they, they won't have access on that half of the block. You can see on the site plan there. So they'll have that one drive, but they won't have access directly off the block, like a driveway onto Martin Luther King.
Right.
Because of the depth there, you don't want multiple turning conflicts onto Martin Luther King.
Turning off of Martin Luther King into the development?
Into, into the site.
So there's no ingress and egress off of MLK for this, right?
Right. They'll have to go into one of those, turn onto those streets, and then turn onto the property.
You have to go into 7th Street?
That's correct.
Or 8th Street? Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Bob.
You ready to go on this, Skip? All right. We have a motion in a second. We're voting on item 8A3. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A4 is a zoning case, and we're back in Ward Four at 4501 South 100, or not 100, I-35 Service Road. It's currently I-2 moderate industrial, and it would become a simplified planning development. Pete? There, no one has signed up.
No one's signed up. Why don't you come forward? This is in the old post office there that was closed, the old social security building and...
Well, this is, my name's Ron Nguyen with Nguyen Engineering. I'm representing Mr. Hunt, the owner. This was an existing bank. This building's a pretty good-sized building. It's existing on that corner, that intersection, and right now, it houses a bingo parlor below. And if you remember, it's a split level. Bingo parlor below, a Department of Labor office on one end, and then we'd like for a church to occupy about 28,000 square feet of the remaining building. And they have a permanent application for a remodel only. It won't be changing any of the exterior. So what we'd like to do is just rezone this so that it allows for use by a church. Right now, it's zoned I-3, which doesn't allow church use. So we're asking for rezoning to conform to the C3 zoning district requirements and allow, also allow use of this church.
Is the intention that the ownership of the building change?
No, the ownership will not change. It's the lease space.
And there's going to be a church on the top floor?
Yes.
And a bingo parlor on the bottom floor?
That's correct. No relation.
I understand. I'd move approval.
All right, we're voting on item 8A4. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Also sent you a letter asking for an emergency. Did you receive that?
I moved the emergency.
Do we have a second on the emergency? All right, cast your votes on the emergency. There are seven votes.
Thank you very much.
Ron, item 8A5. This is a zoning case in Ward One. The address is 6446 North Pennile Avenue. It's currently R4 general residential. It would become a simplified planning and development district. Gary? We have one person that has signed up.
All right. We could have that person come up.
Robert Genetino?
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning. Robert, we will need your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name's Robert Genetino. I live right directly across the street at 6443 North Pennile. And basically, on this issue here, I'm trying to, well, unfortunately, a couple of the residents cannot be here this morning due to work. I'm trying to understand why this is being proposed. The liquor was turned down. As I've read, it says it's accessory to the meals. I need to, like to have some more understanding on that.
Well, I've had the applicant come forward on why they want to do what they're going to do in there, but they have reduced the request from a liquor license to a beer and wine only. It has to do strictly with their food service operation that they operate for their tenants. It's not open to the public. It'll just be utilized by the tenants only. They've agreed... They've agreed to restrictions that were put on to them in the previous application as far as the times that it can operate. It's, it's not, I believe they're going to work off of a charge back to their apartments. There's not even a cash bar, so to speak, in that, that what, what you'd call cash bar. So, you know, they've reduced the request from when the, it was a straight bar liquor license down to beer and wine in conjunction with their food service. So I don't, does that answer your question?
Well, yes, but I, my, within three hundred feet of Isabella Bell's property, you have a seven-eleven that sells three-two, you have a liquor store right next door that sells wine. I don't, and myself and the neighbors don't understand why this needs to be available to their residents when they can go purchase it somewhere else. I mean, we've already had issues with traffic. We've had, actually, a neighbor move out because of the traffic we had. A couple of their animals got killed because we've had higher rate of speed down our street. We've been more congested lately, going in and out of their facilities. And that's, that's the main concern, too, that we've got in, in the neighborhood.
Well, the, the, some of the concerns that deal with just this building, I think, have been addressed as far as the trash and some of the other issues. I believe you brought up in an email to me earlier.
Yes, sir.
The traffic on the street could be their tenants, could not be. It could be somebody else involved in the neighborhood. I mean, it is a city street. So, you know, I think that to look at, at the grand scheme of things, as far as seven-eleven and a liquor store and all that, I don't know. But what I wouldn't want their tenants drinking a single glass of wine and a single beer rather than having to go buy a bottle or a six-pack.
Well, I'm, I'm glad you brought that point up. Is, is that how it's going to be restricted? To when they do, do the meal, that they're going to get served a beer, a glass of wine? Or is it going to be available to as much as they want? Because I know it says, it states that it needs to be with the meal.
It, it's going to be just like a restaurant. If you went to a restaurant, you're going to be restricted to what they're going to serve you until they feel like you're intoxicated. I mean, that's going to be in their license to begin with. But still, it's going to be a restaurant. And they have a food service there and it's only going to be there. It's not going to be open at night as a bar would be when food's not being provided. So again, they've lessened the, the request down from their original proposal. And, you know, I, I feel like they've, they've, again, brought forward a request that's more amenable to the operations that they need and, and also taking care of some of the concerns in the neighborhood.
I understand what you're saying on that point. The other issue, too, that they were asking about was how's this going to be monitored? And to make sure that if that restaurant is open, as, you know, service is going to be done, is that going to be considered just like a bar restaurant where alcohol cannot be, else be brought on at the premises? Reason for what I'm asking that is they have a pool behind them. We see tons and tons of coolers going in the back to the pool. Most bars and restaurants, alcohol cannot be brought on to a premises that is actually being served.
If I may comment, we have a rule already that there's no alcoholic beverages in any of our pool areas. We do have six. That's a standard rule, no alcoholic beverages in any of the pool areas. Of course, you can bring water, coke, et cetera, et cetera. And I will be honest and say I don't check every cooler coming into the, the pool area. But they are allowed to bring their own cokes and sodas and juices and waters.
Reason that was brought up, there was a keg being brought for Beck behind the pool area the other day. That was seen by several members.
And we did have our annual luau. I think if I, as I've said before, we're a partner with several Oklahoma City entities, the Boathouse Foundation, Big Brothers, Big Sisters. And we do have a luau once a year for our corporate partners. Everyone from Integris to, there's a hundred of them literally that we, just to say thank you.
Anything else?
I think I've voiced...
I've made a, a huge effort to speak with everyone. I literally have went door-to-door. I'm not exaggerating that. I have a list of, I think I told you Councilman Morris ninety-seven names. It's actually eighty-seven names that are backing us in this endeavor. John Yocel, the Commissioner-at-Large for the Planning Commission, actually was a resident of our community for about a month. And in the, in the Planning Commission hearing itself, he said that he never had any issues with parking or with traffic, that he would go to the pavilion twice a day and never have any issues with the parking or the traffic over there.
Anything else? But I do have an issue with, with, with the excessive speed. But Oklahoma City Police Department has been on that issue and unfortunately, they've been giving some tickets out to several members. So...
And we're actually working with, the Police Athletic League uses our fitness center to workout in and we're working with them as well to curb that.
Well, the issue I do have, too, is you've mentioned that you've gone door-to-door. You've talked to my landlord. You were supposed to meet with me. I waited and unfortunately, you never showed up to my door.
I'm, I'm sorry. I actually never had an, I didn't know I had an appointment to meet with you. I spoke with your land, the homeowner on the phone physically. I didn't realize that he wanted me to be there to meet with you.
There might have been miscommunication, but I waited to discuss very, you know, issues with you, but...
Robert, how long have you lived in the neighborhood?
Beyond second year now.
Okay. Just wondering.
Yeah, I am, I am a registered voter in Oklahoma City.
Well, I, I only ask because this, this property owner has seemingly made a large investment and really improved the area over the last few years.
Well, no, I, I agree on that.
And I was just wondering if you had been around long enough to have seen the changes? And if so, I was wanting to know your perspective of whether or not it was better.
Yeah, and then within the, mayor, within the last year, the traffic has got heavier. And what Gary was saying, we know for a fact it is, it's going down to their physical fitness facility and back and forth. We just had an issue the other day where we had a red Corvette and a Ford Mustang decided they want a drag race down our street. They came from that facility and started in one of the residents, front of his house, decided to, you know... And that's, that's the thing that I did stop by. I've talked to several of your folks up in the front office about, you know, things that we could address. And basically, I was pushed out the door.
Well, I don't know that that is necessarily the case. We, we try very hard to listen to our neighbors. As an example, we removed several large four-yard dumpsters because one of the neighbors didn't like that dumpster sitting there. We removed that. We fenced in other enclosures. Unfortunately, I think that just by the virtue of us being there with eight hundred homes or eight hundred units, a lot of what goes on in the neighborhood falls back on us. I can't tell you if that Corvette and that Mustang actually were residents or guests. I can tell you we don't sell to outside memberships at that fitness center. It's only the people that actually are guests there in the extended stay side or living there. And ninety percent of them do walk. And I, I can't unfortunately know if it was one of our guests or not.
We probably should move on. We're probably getting off the subject here of the zoning case. But Rob, I appreciate your interest and appreciate the investments your company's made.
Thank you.
Sounds like, you know, we had, we had people moving out of that area and now we have people moving in and we're having issues because there's just a lot of people coming back.
Right. And we just did purchase up fifty-one unit condominiums to the, on Lyrewood, to the north of us.
Robert, if you'll stay on it, we'll try to get the traffic issues addressed with our police department because we want that area to work, too.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
You bet. Thanks for coming down.
I'm going to move approval on this. I thought I could say I think they have reduced the request from the last one that came through to a more reasonable request. And this group has significantly improved the housing in that area. And they continue to buy other properties. They just bought a property that was run down and they're going to move in and do the same thing with that. So they're, they're, they're trying very hard to bring back an area that has gone downhill. I move approval.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We're on to item eight B. This is the second time this has been in front of the council. It's a name change to, let's see, the name of Phillips Avenue between Stantonell Boulevard and Northeast Thirteenth to Children's Avenue. And Skip, I think you've been on board with this as it's moved through the process?
Yes, Mayor. This may be one of the few streets that we have designated a name in honor of a child, or children. And this is to honor the Children's Hospital located on the east side of the street. And I would ask for approval. The, the name change will be the Children's Avenue, which will be the south part of...
All right, we have a motion in a second. This is moving through the process on item eight B. Cast your votes and it moves forward and we'll, of course, we'll be reviewing it and on another day. Item eight C is a zoning case in Ward seven. This is actually a special permit to operate automotive sales. It's currently a C three community commercial district and it's in Ward seven. Skip?
Yes. I haven't received any, any protest in reference to this. Is the, as I understand, Bob, this area is already, it's, it's automobile repair, but he wants to just add the sale of vehicles from the same location, right?
That's correct. And there's a boat sales right across the street to the south. It's, it's a use that's typical in that, that area.
Well, contrary to some of the places in other parts of Ward seven, at least they went through the process and made the application and doing it. So I approve this. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion in a second on item eight C. Comments or questions? All right, cast your votes and it passed unanimously. Item eight D deals with dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under this public hearing on dilapidated structures? Has anyone signed up? All right, sounds like we're ready to go. All right, cast your votes on item eight D. Passed unanimously. Item eight E is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under eight E? Anyone sign up to speak? Sounds like we're good to go. I have a motion. Second? Cast your votes on item eight E and it passed unanimously. On to item eight F. This is a request for a revocable permit to hold the seventeenth annual Dew Draper Twice Duathlon. This is in the area of Lake Stanley Draper in Ward four. Pete, are you going to be competing in this event?
It's somewhat unlikely that I would. I would say the jury's out, but I think the jury's back.
All right. Is there anyone here representing this event? Yeah. Why don't you come on forward then? Love to hear more about it. We'll need your name and address for the record.
David Wood, sixty-twelve Marlowe Lane.
And I see it's a duathlon. Are we guessing that they're running and biking around?
They are running and biking. It's a standard format this year. They're also a regional championship. Two events, two days. Saturday's off-road at the New Draper Trails and Sunday is on the southwest corner of the lake, right there in the parking lot at the marina.
Well, we're trying to encourage recreational activity out at Stanley Draper. So appreciate you holding this event and allowing more people to be exposed to the opportunities out there.
You bet.
And if people want to get involved and participate, what should they do?
Try OKC is a triathlon-related organization here in Oklahoma City. All their events, seven of them each year, people can log onto that website, find out their schedule, their meeting dates. They have a message board that's very active. They facilitate a lot of activity in the city. And our largest event during the year is the Red Man Triathlon at Lake Efron as well.
And the address, the web address was?
TryOKC.org.
Okay. Thanks very much for coming down. Pete, you okay with this?
I move approval, yes.
All right, cast your votes on item eight F. Passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Item eight G is an item we discussed briefly when we were looking at, at items that we might not want to review today. The first item is item eight G one, and this would allow the council to either approve or not approve of the project order for the Maps Through Project. Obviously, this has received a lot of attention. And we have two council people that are missing today. Councilman Shadid has, through Councilman White, asked that this item be deferred. Councilwoman Salyer is asking that it not be deferred. And so those two opinions expressed, as I just stated. What I'd like to do here is discuss the merits of a deferral. And so without getting too far deep into the, the idea itself, we discuss whether or not we want to defer the item. Otherwise, we'll go through a presentation and then defer an item, in which case we might want to have to have a presentation again. And it seems having a presentation on, on two separate meetings seems a little bit repetitive. And it would be nice to have the council people who are actually going to vote on that particular day, whether it's here today or in two weeks, available for the presentation. So with that, Councilman White opened up the discussion with the idea of a deferral. Why don't we give him a chance to, to speak on it? And as, as the math would have it, it would take four of seven votes to have this item deferred. If the item is not deferred, then we'll go through the presentation and assumably at that, assumingly at that point, we'd have a vote.
I, I received a call yesterday afternoon from Councilman Shadid who had a problem with a connection from an international flight and was in Boston and was not able to make the flight connection to get to Oklahoma City. At that time, he told me that there was the only way to get to Oklahoma City was to expend four thousand dollars and drive tonight, at night, back from Dallas. He very much wanted to be here when we did. I told him that I would advance, I, I told, I told him I would advance his request for continuance. And I guess the first thing I'd want to know is from the city manager, from your standpoint, from the city's standpoint, is there a, is a serious problem with the deferral of items, of item G?
Well, we discussed one at the fitness center yesterday, but...
Right, we did.
The, I, I, under the program, we're, we're looking for direction to go forward with it. And so that's an item out there. We've had a fair amount of process from multiple presentations, the council workshops and a presentation a few weeks ago. You know, it's a ten-year program on this. We're anxious to get going on it. Two weeks, you know, is not the end of the world on, on the program.
It, it just seems to me that if we have even one council member, we talked, we talked about this earlier, that had made all kinds of plans to be here and is unable to do it, that just as a matter of the kind of civility that we've operated under the past several years, that we, we ought to do it. And when there, there is no real, other than anxiousness, there is no other real overriding concern about letting everybody be here and have their time at the microphone.
The, the problem with any deferral, especially for the reason of a councilperson missing, is that we don't know what circumstances might take place two weeks from now and cause another councilperson to miss. So we don't necessarily know, you know, who might be here then. And I, I think it's a slippery slope to start deferring items based simply on the fact that, that a councilperson who can't be here wants it. If there, obviously, are four votes for it, then that's the way it's going to be. But I think we ought to be clear about why we're doing it. And if, if that is justification of it on itself, I think that, that sets a precedent going forward that's going to be tougher to deal with on an individual basis.
Well, Mayor, I...
Pete, are you, are you, and, and, because you've been, you've been close on this issue. Are you anticipating a close vote on this item if we hear the presentation?
Yes.
And so therefore, the people that are actually here to vote could make a difference one way or the other. But I think, I think that's significant. If this were expected to be unanimous vote, then it would be, I think it would be different than if we sensed that it might be a close vote. And it's obviously of extreme importance that the council have an opportunity to weigh in and that this, this is about as important an item as we're going to deal with.
To be perfectly candid, I think we have one person that will vote on one side of it and one person that will vote on the other. I mean, I wouldn't want to say that both of those people are going to vote the same way and therefore it would change the outcome. But I do think, as I said earlier, when we're, this is, this and the, and the decision about the convention center are things that are, are going to, they're, they're not, they're not one-week-long implications. They're not one, they're not even ten-year-long implications. They're fifty-years-long implications. So I mean, you look at the, you look at where the, what the decision that was made to locate the Civic Center, I mean, the, the, what is it now? The Cox. See, I would have to remember all the different names that things have been. But it's the Cox Center, that's a fifty-year-long decision and it was a good decision. And, and so I'm not as concerned that we enter some kind of a slippery slope with regard to continuances because I think all of us would resist continuances just for the purpose of delay. But I think if there's a valid reason, like someone has made every effort to be here and can't be here, I would take that, I, I, maybe this is something beyond what I should say, but I might take that personally and I'm not sure I wouldn't take it personally. If I had made a phone call and said, I, for reasons beyond, out of my control, I can't be here. To me, that's different than just saying somebody, I want it continued because I want to try to figure out, I'm trying to love it to death. I want two more weeks in order to figure out how to beat it or I want two more weeks... I want two more weeks in order to figure out how to beat it, or I want two more weeks, which I would plan to use that two weeks for that purpose to some extent, but that's not the reason, that's not why.
I know, but every one of us has missed a council meeting where we wish we'd have been able to be there and vote on something. And that's not unusual.
I haven't.
Okay.
Well, you know, I think...
I have.
We can't guarantee there'll be 100% participation two weeks from now.
I understand.
The second thing is, this is not an item that, there hasn't been an opportunity for the people who are not here to express their feelings. They've done it over and over again, and we know how Councilman Shadid feels, and I think we know how Councilman Salyer feels. So to the extent that we've heard their discussions, their concerns, they've had an opportunity to participate in this, although they haven't, obviously won't have an opportunity to participate in the vote if we go forward with this. But we can't, I don't think, it's a 10-year project, but we can't continually put it off, because two weeks from today, there's no guarantee that somebody will be gone, and whoever's gone will be postponed again. And so I think the longer this thing dangles in front of the community, the more the community feels there is a division on this council that they should be concerned about. And I think we've had a lot of discussion, a lot of opportunities by everybody around the horseshoe to express their feelings about the changes in the schedules, and I think having said that, and without the guarantee that we can have 100% participation two weeks from now, I would say that we don't need to defer this.
Okay. Mayor? Yes, Skip?
In all due respect to both councilmen, you know, this is, as stated, a 10-year project. I don't understand why two weeks or four weeks or eight weeks would make that drastic difference in reference to a project that's a 10-year project. It just seems as if that we're, act as if that we got something over our heads that either we got to move now, or we're going to sink. And I don't see that the case. We know that the money is being collected, the money is being secured, the design has been presented, but at the same time, it still has to come to this council, and the ultimate decision is with us. It should be, if you're talking about whether or not we're divided or not, we are divided. It's a common fact that people look at us every Tuesday, and they hear the debates on one issue or the other. And it's true. You have some of us that believe that things should go one way, we have some that believes that it should go another way.
But what we're really talking about here is the deferral. I mean, we're...
Well, but even with the deferral, if we got to be looked at as being divided because we're asking for two weeks on a basis that has been justified because, well, I say justified, at the request of one councilman, at the non-request of another councilman, but at the same time, when you talk about this whole process, how many special meetings have they had? How many meetings have they counseled under the subcommittees? How many have they counseled? How many have they had to come up in less than almost 48 hours and call a special meeting? So why is the people who has the last say-so, or in reference to what goes forward and when it goes forward, why can't we at least respect each other and say, we need some additional time? That's the only thing I can't understand.
I'm just listening at this point. All right, Larry?
Well, we've talked about civility and respect. I think we have an obligation to respect the people, the citizens, who have donated their time on the subcommittees and on the Oversight Committee, and I think a number of them are here today. I'm going to vote to move ahead. I think we need to move ahead, and that's my comment.
Okay. Yeah, David?
This is a question on the procedure, just a quick one. Would we take the first option and vote on it, and if it passed, then that's it? Or do we, the fact that we've got two options to consider, how will that take place?
Yeah, I think that's the next discussion we could have, that what I was trying to do now is decide whether or not we were going to defer, but I think, I have a proposed procedure for that, but I don't think we're to that point yet. Okay. Any other comments or questions on the deferral?
I will make one more comment. And the idea that the subcommittees have all stood up and spoken is absolutely wrong. That's not the truth. One subcommittee meant before this decision was made, one, one, that was not vetted back through the other subcommittees. Now, I'm not asking us to do that, I'm just asking us to get two weeks, and so we can consider it. But that's not so. I mean, that's nice to say that, but it's not so. The second thing, the fact that we have a split vote here doesn't mean this council's divided. It means we have difference of opinion on this issue. Once we get through this vote, we're not going to be divided. We're all going to be on the same team, pulling the rope as we've always been, or at least we've been since I've been back this time, and I'm sure I wasn't the catalyst for that. It's been going on longer than me. But so we're not divided in the sense that this makes us, I hope the public understands that. This is a healthy discussion about what's going to happen in Oklahoma City the next 50 years, not 10 years, not two weeks, 50 years. These are big, big, big projects. And so if we move two weeks and have a discussion and have a vote, some of us will be pleased, some of us will be disappointed, but everyone will have had the opportunity to have their say, and we'll go on down the road.
Okay, Gary?
Well, I'm glad to hear you say that we're all going to be...
Well, I can only act for me. Let Mayor speak for himself.
Well, I think you're exactly right. But I can tell you, that's not what that camera is showing to the people out there, based on the comments I'm getting, because they are seeing a divisive council. And I'll agree with Skip that two weeks doesn't make any difference, absolutely. But I also agree with Pat in that this is not the first time that we've had discussions on this. We had discussions on it in the workshop that we had, we had discussions on it every time that they'd come up and presented either the timeline, or talked about the project, whatever it may be. So it's not that this hasn't been vetted. And my assumption, personal assumption, would be that deferring it two weeks, we're going to have the same people making the same arguments that they've made all the previous times, and it will move however it's going to move, and that would be the same vote that comes up today. I agree with Larry in the concept that we need to move on with this. Having sit on the, in those subcommittee meetings now, since I took over on that position, I can tell you that all the committees that like where they're at are happy with it and would agree that the timeline is there, and all of the committees that don't like where they're at on the timeline will never get happy with it. If that's the point you want to make to them, are you happy with it? But I will also tell you, sitting on those subcommittees, that I don't believe the timeline is going to be substantially met anyway. The committees that want to discuss about the fact that they moved back a little bit aren't ready. I doubt that they'll be ready even in Option 1 or 2 at some point in time, so we're creating a lot of discussion and a lot of dissension about something that I really don't think in the end run is going to make that much difference. And as I've said to all of the committees, and I said on the Advisory Board also, the dynamics of the MAPS III projects means that whatever we set today, we can unset and change tomorrow. We do them by resolutions. And if something comes up that says, well, there's a group that's ready, but it's not their time yet, is there any way to move forward? I'll bet you that that timeline can be changed, if that's the situation. But I have yet to see a committee ready to go on the timelines even that we're proposing at this point in time.
Okay.
While I respect the concept of honoring requests from council people, I think at some point in time, we're tasked with the, making that decision, and that's what this group does in the final end run. You've got all those subcommittees with all those people on it, and the Advisory Board and so forth, but they look at us to make those hard decisions, and I think that that's what we're being tasked for. So at this point in time, it'd be hard for me to support deferring it any longer.
Okay. Pete, do you want to make a motion to defer?
I may re-defer to the next council meeting.
Skip, I'm sensing you'll second that motion. All right. We're voting to defer item 8G1 or 2. Cast your votes, and the deferral fails by a count of 2/5. We have a presentation from the consultant that has been charged with the task of helping us determine the proper order of the projects. Jim, you want to take over from the presentation aspect?
I do. Mike Mize is here again, and we have not new information this week. This is the same information that we've had three weeks ago when Mike was here, and we spent about an hour going over this. There are two options that are on the agenda. And Mike, we'll go into more detail, but in essence, Option 1 moves the convention center up a few months and moves the park back into three phases, a number of months. Option 2 keeps the park in a north-south format and moves the convention center back a little bit. That's the big picture differences. There's a little bit more to it than that. With that, Mike?
Thank you. Mayor, council members, manage your couch. As Mr. Couch has indicated, the presentation that I have today is identical to the presentation we made three weeks ago. I'll be happy to go through that as quickly or as slowly as you want and answer any questions that you might have. So please don't hesitate to ask questions if you have them during the presentation. Just as a matter of introduction, we have attended all of the subcommittee meetings, all of the advisory committee meetings, city council meetings, have had input from individual citizens and from other areas of the city as well, and all of that has been taken into account as part of our preparing these two options for the project order. The original conceptual project order was developed in March of this year. At that time, we did not have the benefit of having met repeatedly with the subcommittees, with the advisory committee. We have, we ADG have engaged some consultants whose work had not yet been completed as part of that original concept order, which is one of the reasons that it has changed over time. The second project order that really was presented to city council was at the Joint Advisory Board City Council Workshop, and that's the project order that's presented here. There were subsequent subcommittee meetings and other meetings that took place following that, and as a result, and just briefly, the differences between that presentation to the joint meeting and the original are delineated on your sheet and are up on the screen right now, and I can go through those in more detail if you'd like, or just move on to the two recommended project orders. I think I'll move on. I am going to get to, do we have those here? Yeah. We have two recommended project orders. The first project order, I recognize these are a little difficult to see, but we do have a detailed list of how these changed from the project order that was presented in the April workshop. Project order, revised project order number one moves the convention center up 30 months. Phase 4 of the River, the lower park design and construction, and Phase 2 of the transit are moved back two years. The last three wellness centers and the later phases of trails are extended. The upper park is divided into two phases. The first phase, which is early in the program, is a pretty minimal phase that would allow a landing of the Skydance Bridge and some landscaping at the northern end of the upper park. The balance of the upper park would be completed later in the program. The Fairgrounds project would move up one year. The River Whitewater project would move up six months to help it try to coincide with allowing it to have some time to do pre-Olympic events prior to the 2016 Rio Olympics. On transit, we added an investigation and standards phase, which really reflect the process that is currently ongoing and will be continued to be required to try and obtain federal financing, and that's the reason for adding that particular phase. Revised project order option 2 really only has two significant changes from project order number one, and that is that it moves the convention center up 21 months as opposed to 30 months, and it moves the entire, the completion of the upper park to be completed at the end, by the end of 2014, rather than being split into three phases. It's only two phases. It's an upper park and a lower park. The lower park would still continue to be done much later in the program. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yes. With respect to the Wellness Center, can we compare, since both option 1 and 2 are similar with respect to the Wellness Center, what was the proposed timing of the last three Wellness Centers as far as they're being selected and construction beginning?
Well, one of the reasons that we've spread those Wellness, there's several reasons that we've spread those Wellness Centers out, and we've, as part of our meetings with the Wellness Center Subcommittee, we've expressed this. These are the first of a kind, not only for Oklahoma City, but in many ways, first of a kind nationally. The consultant that we've engaged said that the wellness, senior wellness community throughout the United States really has focused on this opportunity that Oklahoma City has. We believe that because of the complexity of these projects, because of the fact that each of these four could be unique and distinct based upon where they're located within the city, and because each of these projects is going to require a partner to assist in the operations of these, we've extended out the first one a little bit to allow for more time to actually identify where that goes, who that partner is, and what is the appropriate level of service to be provided for that particular first one. The reason to extend those other three out is so that after the first one is complete, we have an opportunity to look at lessons learned, to find out what works, what doesn't work, to make sure that the second one, it takes advantage of everything that we can learn from the first, and also has an opportunity to go into that specific community where it's going to be located with the specific partner that would be chosen for that, to make sure that the level of services and the types of facilities that are provided are appropriate for that second Wellness Center. And we've allowed for a little bit of time for both the third and the fourth to repeat that process, to make sure that when we get done, each of those four best reflects the needs of the particular community in which it resides. Does that...
Well, but excuse me again, going back to the original proposal, would all four partners, would they have been selected in 2011 under the first proposal that we looked at in April?
It's my understanding that the partners would be selected for each individual project so that the first partner selection would be just for the first Wellness Center.
Okay. All right. May I mention something about the vote we just took?
Sure.
You know, a week ago, I still had some questions about the whole process, but since that time, I've spoken with Mike Adams, who serves on the Advisory Board for Ward 5. He's a CPA and controller out of LSB. He's attended just about every meeting. Based upon the discussion with Mike, he's comfortable with either one of these two proposals while he has a preference, and I'll support his preference when we get time to vote. Again, he's very comfortable with the process, and I'm just concerned to ignore all of the work that everybody on the committee has put into this effort. work that everybody on the committee has put into this effort by doing something other than these two proposals. Even though I may have some preferences on one or two of these items, I'm really pulled to take into consideration what's been recommended to us and want to pursue. I may have some more questions, but that was the one that came first.
All right. Pat, and then Skip.
I'd just like to make a comment. It's not a question, and I found a powerful tool for analyzing this to help me was the yellow pencil. I looked at the order, option one, and I looked at the purple time slots only because that's actual construction, and to a lot of our citizens, that's when the project begins, is when we begin to turn dirt. If you look at the convention center, it's start construction in 2016, actual construction, the first time that a shovel hits the dirt. And I drew a straight line down through that time, the bottom of the chart, and then looked at the impact on other projects. By the time the construction, convention center starts construction, all of the sidewalks projects will have been completed. Two of the three trails projects will have been completed, and the program will be in pre-construction A and E stage. One wellness center will have been completed and in operation. The second wellness center will be under construction at that point in time. All the fairground projects will be completed. All the river projects will be completed. The transit projects will be under construction at that point in time. They will have started previous to the convention center. And the parks, the first phase of the park will be completed. The second phase will be in the design and A and E part of the thing. So, I think that moving the convention center forward allows us to do, complete a lot of the quote "quality of life" projects before we get involved in the actual construction of the convention center. So, I think that option one is a great compromise. I think it reflects some very thoughtful consideration by the committees in their work, and I was pleased to see it and looked at it with my, I could say, sort of primitive analysis, and found out that a lot of the concerns that were expressed earlier by some of my colleagues about doing the convention center before we do the quality of life projects really wasn't there. When you look at this, we do the quality of life projects. We complete a lot of them. We start up all of them before we start actual construction on the convention center.
That's an interesting perspective. Skip?
Mike, my question is, you reference to the wellness projects as if they were so unique that it's been a difficult time, you know, laying the actual renderings of what one of these projects is. Are they looking at other cities? I mean, what is the major problem with the wellness program?
Well, the fact of the matter is, there is a consultant who's been hired. It's a local consultant with a national subconsultant that has spent a significant amount of time looking at wellness centers in other parts of the country to try and identify some common services and facilities which may be provided in each of these wellness centers. As we've discovered, that core group is reasonably small and doesn't take into account the specific needs of each of the individual areas where these may take place. That subcommittee hasn't quite completed its work, but they are currently in the process of trying to make some determination about what some of these common elements may be. And they have looked, frankly, they've looked at other wellness centers in several other parts of the country, counsel.
Then my other question is, and this may be the big elephant in the room that nobody wants to hear, but the convention center, and, you know, we knew from the beginning of the project which projects were more popular than others as it relates to the voters. So, past that, fast forward, you build a convention center. Where are you going to house the people who come to the convention?
Well, I think everyone who's involved in the convention center process understands that a convention center hotel, if not a prerequisite, is something that has to follow very quickly, and it's my understanding that the city is working on trying to find ways to bring a convention center hotel that would be complete at or near the completion of the convention center, which, if you look, is not until 2018 or 2019.
But where would the location be? I mean, because you, we were talking about the acquisition of land for the convention center. We should be talking about the acquisition of land for a convention hotel at the same time, shouldn't we?
Well, I can, I actually would like to defer a specific answer to that to the convention center site selection committee, which has a representative here, but the fact of the matter is, that has been taken into consideration as part of their work and as part of their proposal for the site selection.
If I can make a real quick comment to Skip's first question on looking at other cities, and I don't want to say I'm speaking for the committee, but sitting in on those meetings, I can tell you that, as he said, this is kind of unique in that if you looked at the other cities that they have gone and looked at, I don't think there's any of them of the size, either geographically or population-wise, that have done senior centers. There's some real good examples out there, but they're in much smaller cities, and the audience and the geographic area that they had to cover is not as great as we've got here. So, part of the task that the subcommittee is really struggling with is how do we make the best bang for our buck? If we're going to cover all of Oklahoma City in four wellness centers, it is going to take considerably more information than, let's say, I don't know what some of those cities were. San Jose comes to mind. It seemed like there was one in San Jose, California. Well, it's a much smaller geographic city that they have to worry about, so to speak. So, it's not that they haven't studied other cities. I think it's that they haven't found a good example for a city of our size, and Mike may disagree with that or not, but I think that that's part of the concern that the consultant providing the information to the committee tried to make their decisions on. Okay? Larry, then Pete.
Yeah, I did a similar thing that Pat did on, I drew a line down. I sensed earlier that three of the projects that the council was interested in, I personally was interested in, so I'm going to speak just for myself, was the wellness center, the trails, and the sidewalks, because I thought that they were the easiest ones to get a grasp on, even with the complexity that I've come to realize is involved in a wellness center. If you take those three right there, by the end of 2014, the first wellness center is scheduled to be completed, if we go on schedule. The first enhancement to the trails is scheduled to be completed, and all the sidewalks are scheduled to be completed. And so, I think from my perspective, these homegrown, if you will, quality of life issues that were important to me personally, I think show excellent progress under the revised project order that you've got here, and so I support them very enthusiastically from that standpoint. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Pete?
My view is, this whole process is just to bring the convention center forward. There never was any consideration for any of the other ideas. If the same amount of energy was being put into the wellness center, and it had the same political clout that the subcommittee does for the convention centers, we'd be talking about when can we build a convention center? If the trails had the same, if the parks had the same, if any of them had the same clout that the convention center subcommittee had, we wouldn't be here today. But the fact is, they don't. Convention center subcommittee said, how can we get to the front of the line or as close to the front of the line? And all the work, then, that was done was to move them to the front of the line. I remember Mike Dover saying, when he first heard it, he said, it's like saying, you want to take a shower when you're getting ready to put your kids to bed, you want to take a shower, you want to take a bath. Either way, you're going to get wet. Either way, you're going to get cleaned up, and that's what this is. This is just an effort to jam it right to the front, as far to the front as it can, and all these sophisticated arguments and ratings and rankings and all that stuff are just so much wind addressing to move what the whole idea was in the first place to the front of the line. I'm sick of it. I'm sick about it. I mean, it is just, it's a mistake on the part of the city from a public policy standpoint to talk about it being fair and what we're doing to these other subcommittees. These other subcommittees didn't have an opportunity to meet and say, what does it take to move us to the front of the line? Come on, we all know that. Somebody might as well say that. They didn't have that opportunity. One subcommittee had the opportunity to do that, say that, and the result is, you, your company, then shoved everything else aside and figured out a way to make that happen. Now, I guess you know who's writing your paycheck, but I am disappointed that there wasn't any balance involved in that. You can, I've talked to, everybody, they've talked to somebody. Well, I've talked to somebody, too. I've talked to people that are on the parks committee that think that the process is terrible, think it was awful, that that was not the way it should have done. Each committee should have, should have had an opportunity to look at the impact on them, not just have somebody look at how we move the convention center to the front. I mean, nothing has changed, nothing has changed that caused the decision to be made to put these in order, in the order that we originally put them in, except one thing has changed. The subcommittee for the convention location system has the most powerful people in Oklahoma City on it, and they are moving it forward at the expense of everybody else. That's the only thing that's changed. We know exactly the order of all these things. We know where people, what people cared about and what they didn't care about. I've got the polling results that showed that the convention, only, convention center only came along when it was push polled. It didn't come along and say, you want to build a convention center. It came along when it was push polled and tied to a sidewalk. So, here we are now ignoring all the realities of what happened based on who's got the power. Obviously, I don't have the power today, but if I had it, I would reform this system. This process would be reformed so it was a fair process, so each subcommittee had the same opportunity that the convention location subcommittee had. The wellness thing, you hide and watch, that's going to be, that's not a project that those people care about. I don't need to name those people. Everybody knows who I'm talking about. That's, the transit is a project they don't care about. Trails are not a project they care about. So, all that stuff's going to the back. You can say, oh, well, it's going to get started. That's wonderful. It's going to get started. That wasn't our original plan. Our original plan was to build it. It wasn't to get it started and then push part of it to the back. There is one thing that's changed. The myriad gardens, and this is a reflection on us, how poorly vetted the entire process was because we should have known what was going to happen in the myriad gardens. We should have been told that so that we weren't making an effort to replicate a park right next door to it with all the same features. That's the only thing that's changed. Now that we know that, good judgment says, well, we've got some space to move some things around because we shouldn't probably build a brand-new park right next to a brand-new park until we have a chance to figure out how that first park's going to work. I mean, that does make some sense. But the idea that all the benefit from that will flow to the convention center, to me is, when we have a $50 million elephant in the room, I mean, that, now it all starts to come clear why this rush to do the alliance was made. It's to find a way to finance a $50 million hotel so you can build a convention center. Doesn't have anything to do with this big-picture pastel that we were painted about, we want to make sure we figure out how we ensure the continuity of this process. It's all tied together. I mean, my friend Jerry Gilbert, you just sat over there in that vacant seat over there, you said that he didn't agree, that he was paranoid, but that didn't mean they weren't after him. And I tend to echo that today. I mean, too many things happen, just boom, 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 without what I consider to be an open process for that all to be a coincidence. It isn't a coincidence. We're just right, we're just passing the genre of training up here.
Yeah. I'd like to bring Eric up and talk to him about the advisory board process. Eric, this, the advisory board saw a duplicate or a very similar presentation. What was the vote at the citizen advisory board level on this?
They, at that point, we had two no votes in May on the two project orders, but the vote was a positive vote for option one with two no votes.
I'm sorry, you confused me somewhere. So, did they vote, they voted on option one, and the vote was seven-two in favor?
That's correct.
Okay.
One other thing that I want to offer is, you know, we were somewhat criticized from a staff level in May, from the advisory board also, from the subcommittees, not having another opportunity to look at those two options. It is true that those two options that are presented to you today, the two that went to the subcommittee in May, did not go back to those subcommittees at that time, but in that end of May and through the month of June, we did take those back, and we did receive some additional comments from them. But I would tell you from the perspective of the meetings and the meeting with each of those groups, and again, this is over 60 stakeholders that we're meeting with, that I would say all of them were positive for these two options. There were still some concerns from the park level about how the park would be split. You know, could that be a viable option? And I would say some agreed that it should be split, that we ought to see how the myriad gardens perform. There's others that think that it should still be right at the very beginning. But that would be the one subcommittee, I think, that had the most vocal comments about either option. But I would come to you today, both are very doable options. Both work, both work from a financial standpoint, but they recommended option one.
Gary, you were representing the council at the citizen advisory board level. Did you get the impression that the advisory board felt rushed or intimidated or in any way didn't have an opportunity to fully vet the presentation and the concept before them?
I believe all of them, either in their own subcommittees or at the board level, advisory board level, I shouldn't say all of them. There were a couple of them that voiced concern about the process, the fact that some, that the timeline actually hit the public and the council before their next subcommittee meeting. But they had, in the discussions that went on around this horseshoe in the advisory council, I did not sense that any of them felt, I mean, it was not something that they were just going to throw their hands up and say, we didn't, you know, this wasn't good. We didn't like this.
And each subcommittee is represented on the advisory board, and so although the subcommittees did not meet necessarily to weigh in on this proposal, the chair of each subcommittee is part of the citizen advisory board, and so there was a representative who listened to this presentation and had an opportunity to vote at the advisory board level?
The chair and the vice chair, both on each subcommittee are from the advisory board. And at the last meeting, Chairman McDaniels went around one by one and made sure that any of them on each of the subcommittees, he brought each subcommittee up by name, and then had the chair and the vice chair have the opportunity to voice their concerns or bring anything up that they wanted to bring up.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Any other questions for Eric, and then we have a lot more, I know we still need to discuss. David, do you have a question for Eric?
Question, just a comment.
Okay.
Well, and Pete, please don't take this as being non-supportive of your views. They're important. But I do want to bring out, because if we don't, people are going to just take what you said as being true, but, for example, the whitewater part of the river, it's being moved up by six months under both proposal. That's a positive. That's not impacting the convention center. The fairgrounds, which from day one has been a, an item that I think has a lot of potential, is being moved up by one year. I think that's great. A lot of people throughout the city like that. The upper park under proposal two is being completed by 2014. And then, the wellness center, you know, I think if we pick the right partner for the first one, the issues of land acquisition and other things could be greatly accelerated. You know, we could pick one today, and I think tomorrow they'd have that thing up and running. So, I'm not concerned with that, and I think we will, it'll accelerate the process related to the remaining three wellness center. Again, if we pick the right first partner, I think we've got some representatives here who could support that. The concern I do have more so than the convention center is the transit center, I mean, the transit system, and I'm a big pro- transit system, and I'm a big proponent of mass transit for Oklahoma City. I think it's critical for, not just now, but for the next 50 years in the development of Oklahoma City, so I'm a big supporter of it. The area that I have a concern with, though, is the proposed track, and we now have an investigation process within the transit center that'll focus on the route selection, which I think is critical. Personally, since Pat voiced his preference, I'm going to voice my preference, and that's option two. The convention center will be completed in 2019 under option two, that's eight years from now. It does allow us to have at least the upper end of the park completed by 2014, which hopefully kind of coincides with the opening of the Oklahoma City Boulevard, but perhaps not. But, and I'm not concerned with the myriad gardens. I don't necessarily think that we have to have this central park to be a duplicate of the myriad gardens. In fact, I hope we don't. I'd like to see it more like the mall area in Washington, D.C., where by four o'clock, that park area is just filled with young adults, young individuals, playing softball, volleyball, soccer. Talk about great use. That is, it's just filled, and we could do the same thing with this park, and I think the maintenance of that type of a facility is not as great necessarily as what the myriad gardens is. So to move the convention center up 21 months under option two does not create a concern for me. Again, we're still talking as far as 2019, as far as when it's being opened. Plus, that gives us more time to address the issue of a hotel. And finally, the Alliance for Economic Development. Maybe I'm naive, but I see a lot more uses other than focusing just on this convention center. I see the development of the eastern part of the airport land, a very important part of the alliance's responsibilities, looking to get us private development, as well as, again, throughout South Oklahoma City and especially along I-240, and even skip in northeast Oklahoma City. I think the alliance is going to be very important and helpful to the city in the overall efforts of economic development. Finally, in these discussions about wellness and health issues, several weeks ago, you know, there are certain counties in the United States, Oklahoma has a couple of them, to where the average life expectancy of females is less than third-world countries. The common issue in all those counties relates to the level of income. So the more we focus on economic development, it's going to increase, hopefully, the standard of living and address some of those wellness concerns, at least on an indirect level. Even this morning, a common denominator that we saw in those areas of the city that had more health problems were lower income. So when we can help improve the overall income level of our citizens, I think we're doing a lot, especially in the area of health and wellness.
Pete, I'm hard-pressed to believe that the creation of 700 minimum-wage jobs is going to do anything to help the average income.
I just want to say-
Yes, go ahead, Skip.
You know, and for the record, every one of the council people here, I get along with. And my statement as far as being divided is particularly in reference to where we are today as it relates to these projects, because it has some divided, you know, issues. But I want all of us to understand one thing, at the end of the day, when we went to the citizens and we asked for this last MAPS three, that we may not see another one, it was, as has been stated, every last one of those projects that was outside of downtown Oklahoma City that reached and could connect to the citizens throughout this city became a passionate and a support from them to us. And when other projects was added on, it was still those projects that was carrying the wagon. And I know where I live, and I know the citizens that voted for me, and I know what I went out in my community and advocated and told them what we would do if they would support us. And that's why I continue to make the statements that I make as it relates to those quality-of-life projects that I feel like deserve a faster track than some of these other huge projects that you know for a fact, you know, is going to take much, much longer than what's predicted and what's projected. And if the economy ever takes another slide, those other projects won't see the life of day, not for a long time. And we'll come back, just like we had to come back once before, and ask the citizens to extend, and they may not be here for us. And I just think that out of nothing but a pure fairness to the quality-of-life projects. And I hear people say, well, you know, the convention center is a quality of life. It's a quality of something from somebody that comes outside, that don't live in Oklahoma. And when you look at this whole issue about the economics of it, I don't know too many people that get ready to go to a convention, and they want all the particulars and amenities of the convention hall. They want to know where's the accommodations for living, they want to know where's the shopping, they want to know where the fun activities are, they want to know what can the kids do, where can the wives go shopping, where's the transportation, and how far is it from the hotel that I'm going to be staying at? And I don't understand why we can't look at some of this in a way that realize that, first of all, like the river project, the whitewater project. You know, we talk about the park, but let's be real, we are in Oklahoma, we're not in Los Angeles, California, we're not in San Diego, we're not in Arizona. Our parks are basically used about nine months out of the year, eight maybe at the most. And so we just built a park that nobody expected to turn out the way it did. I don't think we need to be talking about a park for quite some time. Let's see how that park gets used. Yes, it would be nice to be like New York, it'd be nice to be like Washington, D.C., but we know the demographics in Oklahoma, we know the population in Oklahoma City. So I just think that, you know, when we continue this process, Ward Seven will know that I said that I was fighting for the quality-of-life projects to move them as fast as they could. And I think within a reasonable fairness in reference to the balance of this, and this is what I said the last time, but I just, I don't like the idea that things are being pushed the way they've been pushed, and at the same time, not standing up firmly and talking to us about the other elephant, which is the convention center, and the, I'm going to say the convention center and the hotel. And then we get bits and pieces about a hotel from outside sources that comes dripping down the pipeline. Instead of just having this whole process straight up and down, just say simply, you can't build a convention center in 2012 or 2019 and don't have a connecting convention hotel to it. And we talk about that like it's a sub-park, but in fact, it's reality. And where are we going to get the money to build that? Are we going to go back and ask the citizens for it? Because we didn't tell them when we put these projects together that, you know, we're going to put this convention hotel on here, and we want you to support it, but we may have to come back and find $50 million to build it, or find a partner to build it. But I find it kind of interesting that it's, we can be aggressive about looking for all those other resources, but this wellness center, sidewalks and trails, those are not long-debated issues. It don't take that much consulting and that much studying to look at cities that's comparable to Oklahoma City and realize that, you know, you can do this. The YMCA probably could give us more information about how to do it than anybody. I just think that we're going to find ourselves stuck in a situation that is not going to be good in the long run. I just, and I, I just don't like the fact that the projects that was the genuine voter-supporting projects are being played second fiddle to some of these other projects. And I'm not saying I don't support the other projects, because the record would clearly show that I stood in the middle of a den of lines and churches and neighborhood meetings, and I took the wrath, standing up for these projects. But I also knew that the projects that was driving and that was more acceptable to the citizens were those quality-of-life projects. And I don't know too many citizens in Ward Seven that will stand here and tell you that quality of life is a convention center.
We need to have a discussion on the process here about option one and option two. Obviously, one of them needs to be voted on first or only, assuming it passes. So I'm open to conversation about which of the options you'd like to vote on, one or two.
You know, I would suggest that we vote on number one first because it's number one. And besides, it answers all the questions, I think, that Skip asks us just now about the quality-of-life projects. There, again, I go back to the point that, in the view of the public, these projects don't really start until we begin moving dirt.
Right. I thought you made some great points, Pat, about what it'll feel like when the first shovel turns on the convention center, that virtually all of the so-called quality-of-life components will either be completed or also be under construction. I think you made a good point.
And the other, this is sort of a thrilling comment, it's not worth much, but I'll offer it anyway. The wellness centers are a lot more complex, I think, than people realize, because we've had discussions on this council a couple of times when one size does not fit all when it comes to wellness centers, and we need to design a wellness center that meets the needs of the citizens that it will serve. And one in southwest Oklahoma City may not be the same requirements as one in southeast Oklahoma City or northeast Oklahoma City, and certainly not northwest Oklahoma City. And so I think that we sort of suggest that it's a simple project to do. They're not. They're very complex projects, they require some study, because a lot of the models I've looked at were city-operated facilities, where the city actually ran it. And we approached this from the very beginning, that that would not be our model, that we would have partners involved in it.
Right.
Anyway, I would suggest that we-
Pat is suggesting option one. David has talked earlier about that. He likes option two, I'm suggesting that he might prefer option two to be voted on first. Any of you three have opinions about which one you'd like to vote on first?
Does that matter to me? I'm going to vote no on both of them. Do whatever you want to.
All right, well, I need a motion. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on voting on option one? All right, cast your votes. On to item 8H, this is the allocation for the downtown streetscape as part of TIF 8.
Mr. Mayor, this is a secondary allocation of the TIF $8 for the Devon TIF. We originally had an original allocation that was used for the improvements of the myriad gardens and used for streetscape projects one, two, and three, and we used most of that for that. And so now we're coming for a supplemental appropriation. That doesn't mean we're over budget, we just bid off a piece to do those first major projects. And now, as we're, project, Streetscape Four is out to bid, and Streetscape Project Five is about to go out to bid, we need that next piece of the allocation.
Comments or questions on item 8H?
I'd just, a question, and this is not directly related to H, but it's sort of peripheral, I hope. We've had a lot of changes, you know, Project 180 and our streetscapes downtown. We've discovered a lot of things that we hadn't anticipated, which you always do when you work on an existing system, and so it wasn't surprising at all. Have we got to the point where we spent so much money, we'll have to cut back on any of our 180 plans?
We may have to cut a couple of the edge streets out of it. For example, just as an example, North Walker was done a couple of years ago. The property owners down there really don't want any changes up there, they like the look of it, and so North Walker, North Walker being up here, North of Fourth, is a likely candidate to be removed. We're evaluating, as we go through the line, we're very, very closely monitoring it. We do have some contingencies built in, although you're correct, those contingencies are being eaten up a little bit because of some of the costs, primarily underground unknowns.
Comments or questions on item 8H? Ready to vote?
I would move it.
Have a second? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item 8I, this is the resolution.
Mayor.
Passing along, yeah.
I would like to reassert Councilman Shadid's request. He may be wanting to prepare his Christmas card list, and he needs to know who to include and who not to include, so I would move that we hear the presentation, but we defer the vote for two weeks.
Okay, so item 8I is the convention center site selection, and it has passed through the advisory board and is now at council, and this is the process that would send the MAPS staff and consultants scurrying to complete this project and the timeline that we've previously approved. As I said earlier, I would entertain options to defer this item at the beginning of the discussion of the item, which is where we are now. Pete has interjected that he'd like to see a deferral based on the fact that Councilman Shadid is not here and had asked for a deferral. Discussions on the deferral of item 8I.
Well, to some extent, the same discussion that we had previously would apply here. We have no guarantee that there'll be 100% participation in two weeks. We've had a lot of discussion on this. It's not a first time that this project has hit this council, and so I would see very little value, if any, in deferring it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the deferral?
I would want to say this, and I failed to mention this earlier. I just think that, you know, out of pure respect and civility to each other, that a deferral being requested by a council person who can't be here through no fault of his own, I just don't understand why we can't respect that. I have sat here for the period of time that I've been elected, I've seen the mayor ask for a deferral, I've seen the manager ask for a deferral, and now we have a council person, simply because some of us may know that he may not support one way or the other, and to not respect a simple request for a continuance. Now, it makes no difference to now, because we've already voted previously, but I just want the record to reflect it. I just think that that's not-
Other comments on the deferral of item 8I before we go forward, okay? Pete, you want to make a motion for the deferral? Skip, you want to second the motion on the deferral? Okay, we're voting on whether or not to defer item 8I. Cast your votes, and the deferral fails by a count of two-five. And we have a presentation by consulting group, Populus.
We do. Todd Voth is here this morning from Populus, a consulting firm that's assisted us in this process, and with that, I'll turn it over to Todd.
Good morning, Mayor.
Morning.
City manager, council members, it's really great to be here with you today and also enjoy the lively conversation. I'm responsible for the Populus Convention Center planning and design practice, and have the great pleasure of having local partners in GSB who've been working with us on this project as well. So today, what I wanted to do was present to you a very brief overview of what we've gone through, the process- to you a very brief overview of what we've gone through, the process that we've gone through to get to where we are with making a recommendation for the site selection. And it should take about 10 minutes, and there'll be time for questions. So when you look at the screen, this is the process that we've gone through. We've had kickoff meeting in February and four workshops. And since that time, we've made a presentation to the subcommittee, and then on the 20th, or 23rd, we made a presentation to the full advisory board. And we're here for you today to present as well and get your thinking and approval. So in the first meeting, we did the kickoff. We introduced our team. We reviewed the process and milestones. The second workshop, or the first workshop, we came to the group and confirmed the program for the convention center and the hotel. We identified potential sites for both the convention center and the hotel. And then we also confirmed site selection criteria and weighting for those sites. In the second workshop, we identified the top four sites. So we moved from 11 sites down to four. We presented the rankings. And came back in the third workshop, and we had eliminated two sites. They had fatal flaws that we discovered in further evaluation of those two sites. And we had always said upfront that we wanted to have three sites to compare against one another, so we added a third site back in. And then presented the revised rankings. And then in the fourth workshop, we presented our final recommend, recommended site. And here are the sites that we originally considered. There were eight standalone sites. You can see they're all in the urban core. And there were also three hybrid sites that kind of tied in there. So those are the 11 sites. In our first workshop, then, when we reduced to the smaller number, we had four sites that stayed in the contention. We called it Coors Shore North, the Cox Center Site, which is where the convention center is today, the North Bricktown Site, and the East Bricktown Hybrid, which was on the end of Bricktown. Those are the four sites. And then we reduced it to two. The North Bricktown Site fell out because of a number of rightaways and transit access onto that site, and it just was not easily accessible either. And the Cox Center Site fell out because it had some structural challenges with trying to actually replace part of it and keep the arena intact. And it just became much more costly than we had originally valued, imagined. And so we were at two sites, and I told you before, we added a third site back in, which is the Coors Shore South Site. It was on the rankings in the previous study. It was only one point different from being in the contention anyway, so it seemed the logical thing to do. So we had three sites that we evaluated. We went back and looked at them in greater depth, and actually made the recommendation for the Coors Shore North Site. That is immediately south of the new Myriad Gardens. We went through a rating and weighting criteria, and this is too small for you to see, but there are a number of items in there that we evaluated at length for each one of the sites. We did this originally with the 11 sites, and we did it again when we, we reduced the number of sites. And so these were the three finalists that we evaluated. Our advisory group had some comments about a couple of the scores. Those are highlighted in yellow. We went back and looked at it. We agreed that they were, could be adjusted, only the, the adjustments really didn't matter, and it didn't make any difference in the outcome of the rankings. So in the end, Coors Shore North Site finished with 352 points. Coors Shore South was 280, and the East Bricktown was 315. Now, we said from the start that the numbers alone wouldn't be our criteria for selection. We'd use our professional expertise and, expertise in these matters to make that selection. And that's, that's exactly what we did. And so we selected the Coors Shore North Site. Here's a diagram that shows where it's located. Of course, you're all familiar with the site. It is bounded on the south by the new Boulevard and on the north by the new Myriad Gardens. And this site is right in the middle of the activity. The blue circle that is, its radius point is right at the, what we call the 100% corner of the site, is a quarter mile out, and that allows you to walk a quarter of mile. That's an easily walkable distance. And that, you can see the hotels that are inside that quarter of a mile are three primary hotels that you utilize now. And so from that perspective, we felt it was a good site. Also, great access to Bricktown, which is another one of your terrific assets, and of course, the new Myriad Gardens. So one of the things that we did when we made the recommendation for this site is we went and looked at a couple of options that you could actually see could be developed in a way that you could have a new convention center on that site. One option was not enough. And of course, these are just diagrams. But the first option is what we're calling the below-grade option. The exhibit hall would actually be constructed below the surface of the street level. This is something that we did in Phoenix, Arizona. It works quite well, quite efficient. The loading docks are pushed below ground as well, which makes them, it cannot be seen. The hotel side is directly to the east of the convention center on the same property, and future expansion is on the west side across Hudson, which allows for future expansion, which of course is one of the most critical things in convention center design to accommodate. The second level, which is now the street level, has the ballroom and primary meeting rooms on the street level, which allows 360-degree access around the site to this building. Now, it's much different than what you have today with the Cox Center. You've got a front door and a back door, basically. And this kind of diagram would allow pedestrian access all the way around, also connection to the hotel site, and also connection to future expansion. So that's the street level. The next level up has another level of meeting rooms. And then this is a cross-section of the building. As you can see, in the top section A, there is an exhibit hall below grade. It, it goes all the way under the Harvey Street Axis. It connects to the hotel as well as to the, the convention center. And then the section below that, section B, shows the relationship of the ballrooms and the meeting rooms to the exhibit hall and the street as well. Then there's a second option that we looked at, and this is what we're calling the street level option, where everything that's built would be built above ground. No, no sellable space below ground except some parking. In this diagram, you still have the ballroom and meeting rooms at street level with 360-degree access. Still have the hotel site to the east and the future expansion to the west. The difference here, oh, and then the second level, sorry, second level has again more meeting rooms on top of that. And then the third level is the exhibit halls that would be constructed on top of all that, connecting to the hotel and, and also the future expansion. But the Harvey Axis would be bridged over rather than be open to the air. And so in this cross-section, you can see the Harvey Street Axis. Right in the middle of section A is an opening that connects on through and also connects to the hotel. And then down below is the second cross-section. These are three-dimensional diagrams as well that kind of outline what the first option would look like. So imagine, if you will, that the exhibit hall is going underground, it's connecting underneath, underneath the Harvey Street Axis, and the convention center is in the middle there, right to the right middle, and the new expansion is to the far right, and the new hotel is to the left. All, all bounded by the new Boulevard on one side and the new Myriad Gardens on the other, keeping that axis intact so you can see through to the new park to the south. Now, this is a little bit different diagram. This is the one that bridges over and also has the hotel on the site, and bridges over the Harvey Street Axis and connects into the expansion. This is a view looking to the south. And finally, the advisory committee had asked us to look at what would happen if the hotel was not on the site. And so one of the, one of the great options that you would have is repurposing the block that the Cox Center sits on currently. That could be a number of things, but one thing it could be is a location for a new convention hotel right there in the middle of all of your activities. So those are the diagrams. There were a number of pros and cons that we looked at, and of course, on all the sites, we went through this evaluation. But this particular site had a, a lot of advantages that the others quite simply just didn't have. And the cons, you can see, there are some challenges building below grade. We did a very thorough evaluation of how to do that here in Oklahoma City, knowing that there's some groundwater issues. We also did an evaluation of the cost associated with doing that construction. There is some cost premium associated with constructing below grade, but it's not all that much. And to some degree, there's a little bit less truck efficiency, but not enough to say that it's a problem. And we've done this before. We know how to do it. So all in all, there's a number of advantages to this site. We were, when we started this process, we told the committee that, that we had two goals in mind. One was to be very thorough, and the other one was to be very objective and not to be influenced by political sway, and to be really conscious of the fact that this site was going to serve Oklahoma City for 50 years. So we believe that this is the best site for Oklahoma City, and, and we thoroughly evaluated it. So with that, that's the end of my presentation. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to address those.
Questions? The, the presentation we've just heard on the convention center site analysis?
Just a question. The, the site recommendation, is that also included a recommendation to use option A, the below-grade?
Not necessarily. All we're saying is that you have two options there. You can go above ground or you can go below. This was not really a design effort. It was really, if you're going to select this site, be sure that you've got more than one option to build it in case something's not quite right or the cost change. So we feel pretty strongly that we've protected your future here.
So at this particular meeting, we're considering only the site itself, not the option of construction?
Yeah, that's right.
So consider that a design. Okay. Yeah, Larry?
This, this, if we select this site, can we, by the projections you have right now, have a, a 200K exhibit hall, 50K for meeting rooms, have an attractive building, and build it either above or below ground?
Yes.
So it all fits in a budget that we have?
All fits.
Thank you, sir.
If at some point in the future, it's determined that the building needs to be expanded, what, did you take that into consideration?
Yeah.
And what would occur then?
It would go, it would go immediately to the, to the west across Hudson. There's a substantial piece of property there. It would make sense. We even looked at some options, you know, of depending upon the construction of the South Park, actually expanding southward underneath the park. But, you know, there's a lot of unknowns with that and a lot of risk associated with that. But that is still kind of a remote option. But the main thing that we've got to do in convention center design is to protect your future. When you think about the kind of investment your community is going to make, you can't be short-sighted. So expansion is probably the most critical thing that we do, other than getting the, the site right to begin with.
Eric, could you come up and, and I, I had a question for Eric, and there may be more questions for, on the, what was the advisory board's vote on, on this issue?
So this was, this was 100% recommended approval to the city council.
Okay. Do you want to come back up? Sounds like Skip and then David have comments on the presentation.
What's the, in comparison to the, to the Cox Center, what's the square footage that you would be proposing in reference to this site as far as the convention center?
This, the exhibit halls, we would essentially double on this site, so 200,000 feet, all right? And of course, right now, at the Cox Center, you've got varying classes of exhibit space, different heights, ceilings. And so it's actually less than that. So 200,000 square feet of exhibit space, another 50,000 square feet of meeting space, and then a substantial ballroom that would serve the needs of the community as well, somewhere between 30 and 40,000 feet.
All right. David?
Just a quick question. Did y'all do any analysis on the site itself as far as the ground to, to accommodate if you built the center, you know, below ground? Are there any problems with respect to the land?
Yeah. We, we got in, you know, we looked at all of the, all of the sites, you know. All of them have some, some degree of hazardous material remediation. Nothing, nothing substantial, but they all have some degree of that. Of course, the, the water table is probably the most challenging thing. And we know that the arena was built, I think approximately 25 feet below grade and had some de-watering construction as well. So we had a lengthy conversation with the people at Flintco and all of their experts that were building below grade for the Devon Tower and what they experienced. And we talked to our own structural engineers that we work with all the time that, that get into this quite frequently. And we feel very confident that this is a doable thing. This is not something that you shouldn't do. It'll, as a part of the cost premium that I mentioned, was associated with actually the waterproofing and de-watering of that site, which is a pretty common thing anymore. So we're confident that's okay.
Okay. Skip?
Building on this site without, without the hotel would be, well, what would be the challenge if it was built without a hotel, and then you came back later and said you need to build a hotel?
Well, the below-grade option, you'd have enough room to build the hotel without impacting that construction whatsoever. The upper-level exhibit hall actually was tying into the hotel. So, you know, there might be some challenges there. But, you know, quite frankly, we didn't get into the design. We were looking at it in terms of how those components would relate to one another without thinking about phasing. But I, I, there's a number of cities in the United States that have built convention centers and didn't build their convention hotel. And that's been problematic for them. There's no question about it. It's really important that a hotel gets delivered fairly soon after the convention center is delivered in order to make it work like it should. That said, you've got a number of really strong hotels inside that quarter-mile radius that can serve the need. You're just going to need more because what's going to happen? You're going to build a new convention center, and you're going to have a greater need because you're going to grow. You're going to, you're going to generate more revenue for your community because now you've got a new convention center. And so if things work the way they should, it's all looking up, you know? And, you know, that will help with being able to pay for, for a convention hotel as well.
So that's how you said we'd pay for it?
No, it's just part of it. Unfortunately, that wasn't part of my, maybe it's fortunate, that wasn't part of my chart.
Anybody else with comments or questions? You got Jim?
I talked to Councilman Shadid last night, and he, he had a number of questions and didn't want, but he had two specific questions I'd like to ask you just to, to get on, on the record. One was that he'd heard that the, to get the hotel to fit, it would have to impede in the right-of-way of the Boulevard, and the Boulevard might not be as functional as it needs to be because of the hotel would need to take some of that right-of-way.
That, that's not correct. And one of the, and then just to kind of expound on that a little bit, as long as the alignment has not been set for the Boulevard yet, the one idea out there is, is if you can push it further south, as much as, as far as south as you can move it, would be ideal. That way you have more, more room for whatever you need to do. It's just kind of common sense, basically.
His other question was, although we haven't acquired the property yet, he, he's concerned that we may not be able to, to do it within the amount of money that you've set aside for, for land acquisition. And if we can't acquire for that, then what?
Well, I, we had a group called Integris that was part of our, our team evaluating site selection costs.
Not the local hospital here.
Pardon me?
Not the local hospital.
No. In fact, they, in fact, they're an Oklahoma-based firm. They're, they're actually out of Tulsa, quite familiar, working in Oklahoma City. But they did an evaluation of the costs, and they feel quite comfortable that that is, the cost differential between this site and the other sites is not that great. So we were, we did not, however...
Negotiate with the property?
No, and we didn't.
And we also...
We didn't set those numbers either because we didn't want it to cause a problem out in the marketplace.
And, and we do have a, an eminent domain option if necessary. Okay?
Other comments or questions on the presentation? Well, thank you very much for traveling back to Oklahoma City and presenting it to us today.
No, I appreciate it. It's been a pleasure working with us. Thank you.
All right. Well, we have a motion to approve and advance the advisory board's recommendation to us. We have a second. Any other comments or questions before we vote? All right, cast your votes. And it passes by a count of six to one. On to item 8J. Originally, this was scheduled for the possibility for executive session, but due to the length of time, we want to put this off till another day?
Yeah, we, we'll put that off for two weeks if it's agreed by council.
All right. Do we need a motion then? Or...
Just strike it.
Just, just strike it?
Move to strike it.
Okay. Do we need a vote? Okay. We have a second on the move to strike. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9A is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 9A? All right, how about a motion? We have a second. All right, cast your votes on item 9A. This is claims recommended for approval. Passed unanimously. Item 10 is items from council. Pat, you want to get us started?
I mean, a couple of comments. I was really pleased to see the report on wellness effort. I think that's really important to our city. I have two suggestions that are city purview kind of things that we might want to look at. First is our strategy or vision on parks in the city. We, the last several years, have focused, you know, on destination parks, big parks, and I think in order to improve the wellness, if we had smaller parks, we could provide variety of activities scattered through the city, it might help the wellness situation. Secondly, in order to help that walkability of our city, I think we need to review our sidewalk options. I think one of the key elements to get people to walk on sidewalks is they feel comfortable. And I'm not sure that we, as narrow as our sidewalks are and as close to the curbs as they sometimes are, that we provide that level of comfort and safety in their minds. So, I wish we could look at those two items.
I'm unclear on the last item about sidewalks.
Well, we've got, we've put in four-foot sidewalks in a lot of areas, which are very narrow. Two people can hardly walk side by side on the sidewalks. We, when, there are, some along sectioned line roads, they're a couple of feet behind the curb, and so we have traffic moving at 40 or 50 miles an hour and somebody walking there. The idea of being safe is not very good. When we have to push them to the curb, we go to five feet, which still, I don't believe, provides the level of safety or feeding of safety that would encourage people to use the sidewalks.
Okay. Skip?
Yes, I would like to, to make the statement on reference to a program that's part of the Dodd-Frank Wall Street Reform Consumer Protection Act. The state of Oklahoma received, recently received $50 million as it relates to, I'm going to say received, yeah, as it relates to people who were affected by the Wall Street down economic tragedy and which they are setting aside money to help people with foreclosures. And the Neighborhood Housing Service of Oklahoma City is part of the administering arm of these funds for the state of Oklahoma, and the number is 231-4663. And it's a very good program for those individuals who've been affected because of either medical conditions, unemployment, you know, or the economy that affected their inability to pay mortgage payments on their, their homes. And so, I just find it kind of interesting that this fund, this program was released in June. The deadline is July the 22nd, but for anyone that is interested, it is the Neighborhood Service, Housing Servicing of Oklahoma City, and I'd like to see if we could get our PR department to send out a, a notice on this, since we do a partnership program with Neighborhood Services.
I'd be happy to make that happen.
Thank you, sir.
All right. David?
No, thank you.
Pete?
Just a comment on the staff report we received on medical service program. It's rewarding to see that our projections were as accurate as they are in that program's going forward. It's been, it's been a really good thing for, for the city, I think, and, and it's just a good, it was a good report. I just wanted to comment that, compliment staff on all those projections that we made a few years ago when we passed that, that they're all coming, coming true.
Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This past weekend, my wife and I had the opportunity on three occasions to go down to Bricktown, and we were extremely impressed with the vibrancy, with the enthusiasm of the people. On Friday night, we went to the Harkins Theater. The plaza in front of the Harkins was just packed with families and young people just enjoying downtown. And then Sunday night, we had the privilege of attending the Philharmonic's presentation featuring Sandy Patty and an unbelievable fireworks display after that. And Jim, I'll forget all the people who supported that, but the city was not involved with that, but it was all through companies and foundations. Were you not to put that on?
Sponsorships. It was sponsored by Chesapeake Devon, Inasmuch Foundation, The Oklahoman, and OGN. How could I forget that one, Mr. Ryan?
But, the, the parking lot in, in front of the Bricktown event center just east of the ballpark was packed again with families and, and people just down there enjoying each other's company and the presentation. And then last night, Mandalay Baseball, the Red Hawk owners, put on a great fireworks display, and there were people literally all over downtown camped out watching that again, free work fireworks display put on by Mandalay, and the ballpark was packed. It's a great convergence of people down there just enjoying Oklahoma City. And I'd like to remind the folks in Hilldale, they have a neighborhood meeting tonight at 6:30. Look forward to seeing them then. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Gary?
Just one thing there. We have a meeting tonight at the Lutheran Church at 8811 West Wilshire concerning the full-landing project on Wilshire from county line to the turnpike. So, any of the neighbors in that area that want to hear what's going on with that project, again, the church is at 8811 West Wilshire.
Okay. City manager reports?
In the interest of time, we got a presentation on pricing agreements and how we handle our procurement issues that I think we'll put off for, for a couple of weeks due to the time, but it was, we had so many renewals today, I thought it'd be appropriate, but we'll put that off. Councilman White already commented on the medical service program update, and, and the June sales, use tax collections, sales and use tax collections remain strong.
All right. Comments or questions on the city manager reports? All right, we have a couple of citizens who have signed up to speak. Roy Stafford? It's like we wore him out. Yes?
My name is Steve.
Okay.
You're odd.
I will let you speak, but hold on just a second. Phil Hughes? Phil, thanks for coming down. We'll need your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to, to present to council.
Okay. My, my name is Phil Hughes. I'm on 1145 Northwest 43rd, and most be familiar with our plan MetNet, and I'm here getting extremely positive readings on getting some funding in here to the tune of $5 billion, and that's going to change the game a lot. And you heard, you know, the Old Testament says, well, we're looking for just one just man. Well, I see two or three, and that's all we need, and I'm looking around for people that I want to work with on this thing. But, why, what are y'all designing this for? We've got a $14 trillion debt, 1.4 trillion in the hole every year, and y'all are designing something that costs so much money for the common man to live in? You're creating just an oasis downtown in Chesapeake. I like what Skip said. What about the rest of the city? I brought out to the Jacobs people, said, guys, you're going to have prosperity around San Faye Station. Rest of the city's going to be a slum. I said, I'm sorry, Mr. Hughes, that you think the rest of the city's going to be a slum? I said, yeah, you're damn right. At $10 a gallon, I think the rest of Oklahoma City's going to be a slum in 2035. Now, what is the, what's this going to happen that we're only going to? We, we want a convention center that is going to attract the biggest conventions, but it's only going to be one-third the size of Georgia O'Brien in, in Houston? If we put, didn't, let me ask you this. Did we not offer Producers Mill money for a convention center with a convention center in mind? I think we did. I have sources that said we did. Now, why are we leaving that to the end? Why are we letting Producers Mill and all the rest of the parcels in South Downtown ride the value of property up? And how are you going to lock in the property value? They're going to say, well, you're paying Producers Mill $240 million now, this is five years from now. Why are you letting people get away with this? You've got to clear the whole thing and go and make the right decision. And if Producers Mill is the right place, I don't care what they're asking, it's got to be negotiated. Furthermore, I'm not paranoid, but I have seen definite signs that the design of the city and the movement on this entire process is designed to lock out comprehensive rail in Oklahoma City. And we're going to visit that in federal court, my friends. We are. So, anyway, I sent every one of you a map that I've sent around showing MetNet and South Oklahoma City. It's, it's on email. But, there's one other thing, and that is that we, we mentioned Clara Luper today, and I grew up in northeast Oklahoma City, and I tell you, integration will not be complete until you get the crime down and until you get rail all over the city to bring our property values up. Jim, I have renovated two houses and worked hard, and just speaking personally, I've lost, I've seen a total loss of $40,000 on two houses because AIG disaster and then you're concentrating on downtown. That pulls money away from me, and I don't tend to like that. The only solution is to go to a rail system that's going to benefit everybody, and we've haven't seen the end of anything with a $14 trillion debt. With a $14 trillion debt, we go get America working, we have jobs for our seniors building trains in all our cities. That knocks down that deficit every year. Furthermore, we build infrastructure. When the food prices are going to go up, as they're going to in the future, our transportation costs are going down. So, we net out at zero. Right now, we're heading on a demolition derby, and you've got to, we've got to say, I'll, I'll wrap it up. The perspective from the television stations where you've been at, Mick, is totally different. They come from Edmund. We need to get more people in the media that come from where I've seen, and that is the problems that we've got in the mid-city. Anyway, I'll come back from time to time and bring up other things, but I think the reason you're rushing this is because the mayor's election's coming up, and I think I may start a mayor campaign early, and I can get out what has happened here before the public in plenty of time. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Ma'am, you want to step up to the microphone? You, I know you didn't sign up to Citizens to Be Heard. I'm concerned that we may have missed you.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Come on up, we'll help you. And if you'll pull the microphone down and give us your name and address, we'll...
First of all, my name is Candy West, and my address is 1812 Northwest 17th.
Okay.
And I, first of all, want to apologize for my attire. I tried to call Friday and couldn't find out anything, and then when I called this morning, they said I had to be here at 8:30. It was 8:15, so I just came in what I had on.
Okay.
I do know how to dress for hearings.
We're, judging by your address, we're thinking you might be here for item 8DC, which was a, a public hearing regarding a dilapidated structure at 1812 Northwest 17th Street.
Yes, sir.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
That's in Ward 6. What's your concern about that item?
Well, in 2000, I applied for a HUD program, and I talked to Jeff and Marion and all that, and because of rehab in downtown Oklahoma City, they didn't get to it till 2006. When they got to it, we had bad mail service, and someone sent the letter of approval to Northwest 12th. I never got it, so when I got a letter saying it was canceled, I called, and they said, well, we sent this letter and you didn't respond, but I never received it.
Charles, can you get this, a picture of this property up for us? Is that possible?
Yeah, we can do. It's attached to a garage.
So, what happened was, it was only a few shingles missing when I first applied, and then I applied again in 2008, and I had a roommate of mine of 20 years, Marcia Hank, she was one that usually took care of the outside maintenance, and she went to a nursing home with dementia. And then in 2009, I went to the hospital with hip replacement, breast cancer, colon cancer, and I now have rectal cancer. I'm supposed to have an appointment today, but I put it off for this. In the meantime, I talked to Rosemary Selby, and she said that she'd give me extension. And a friend of mine, Lynn Heinz, came over and started shoring up the garage, moved all the debris behind the garage and in front of the garage, and trimmed everything, and complied with her request, and got it out the curb by the 27th Big Trash Pickup. She informed me if we did that, that she would work with me on it, and I talked to rehab, and they told me to go ahead and reapply, and we would see, and she would keep in touch with Ms. Selby on the, on that progress of that.
Is it your intention to try and save this building, or are you going to try and tear it down?
No, we're going to try to save it.
Well, I'm, I'm just looking at it here, and I'm farthest from a structural engineer you're ever going to meet, but that looks like it's going to be a really tough building to save.
Well, he's already started shoring it up, and he, he first looked at it, he wasn't sure, and then he said, yes, we can fix it.
Okay. Charles, does staff have an opinion on this property?
Yes, it's already, it's almost collapsed. Only thing that's really been holding this up is a couple of trees.
Well, it was in a lot better shape when I first applied for that program, and I've been waiting eleven years for y'all to fix it.
Well, you know, that program aside, what we've got, I'm concerned is a safety issue in your neighborhood because that...
Well, I have a gate in front of it. The only reason anybody knew about it was because somebody reported it had to be behind my gate in my backyard.
Do you have any reason to believe that, that the financing to rehabilitate this structure is going to change in the next few days or weeks?
I don't know. I just, I need the garage. I'm a single person. I live alone. I need it for my car. I need to be able to house my car in there in the winter, and I had planned to put up a, a, what do you call it? A metal gate that actually moves back and forth, but I haven't done that yet. But, because of my health in the last two years, I almost died. I still have rectal cancer. Was supposed to find out this morning if it invaded the vaginal area or not, and all I needed some time to get this rehab project going and have him fix it.
Are you using it now? Is your car in there?
No, but my, my lawnmower and all my other stuff is.
Okay. I'm open to suggestions from council. I'm inclined to leave this on the list and, and have her work with staff for the next 30 days. Yeah, yeah. Skip?
Do I, the housing programs, any of them, do they...
From my understanding and visiting, and my understanding from visiting with our housing programs, she was in the program, she failed to match any phones.
That's because the thing was sent to the wrong address, and I didn't know about it.
And they canceled the contract.
They canceled it because I never received the letter.
Was it for the house?
Because I would have given them the $800, but I didn't know about it because they sent it to Northwest 12th.
Was it for the house or the garage?
I believe it was for...
It was for the garage, and they were supposed to have emergency funds of $2,500 for the garage, and Jeff said that they were even considering tearing it down and rebuilding it in order to make it...
I'll tell you, here's what I'd like to do. What I'd like to ask staff is if they will make a couple of phone calls to the organization and, and try and get some feeling. If, if they can come up with a sense that there's a short-term solution to your problem, I'd love to work with you and help you save this property and give you a garage that, that will work. But, if we can't get any sort of verification that something's in the works or that can be easily handled, I, I think we owe it to the, to your neighborhood to, to go in there and take this down for you.
Well, I'm not happy about that. In the meantime, I started a project on 16th, working with Dan Steinberg. I'm the Secretary of the Neighborhood Association. This is before I got sick, and working with Lou Kerr and with Brett and John Calhoun and Carl Friend to rehab 16th. We got a design overlay. We, I got Lyric Theater, to buy the theater over there because I'm a realtor, and I did the contract for that, so I'm all for fixing it up. I just don't think, with all the years I've been waiting on the city to fix it for me, that I should have to pay for it.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
No action needed on that item. Are everybody ready to adjourn?
This is Brad, this is Brad, uh, Mayor.
Uh-huh.
Roy.
Roy, you want to speak? Come on up.
My in and out is my wife is on public transit coming downtown right now.
Roy, did you name an address for the record?
Roy Stafford. My last physical address was 1236 Northeast 30th. I've been homeless since July.
All right. Roy, about three minutes is, is what we've got for you to look at here, Brian.
Uh, this can be done in three minutes, so this is what I had been requesting all week, week, was to, what I need to do to get the issues that I would like to discuss put on the docket so that it can be addressed in a timely and current manner, because I just went to, what is it, Kinko's or whatever it was, whatever, and ran some copies for the council so that we can address these issues, and it won't be like, this is not like the previous times that I spoke, I have a prepared presentation.
Okay. Do you want to pass those out, and we could consider them on our off time?
This is what I'm, this is my question. I guess, do I need to leave these documents for them to be reviewed so that they can be put on the docket, on the...
Well, you can certainly leave them with us, and if, if there's at that point a proactive motion by a council person to put something on the docket, a council person could do that.
Okay, well, the last time that I prepared documents and brought them and left them, I got no response from the council at all. That's why I'm trying to get a firm answer while I'm standing here as to which way to go with this, because...
Well, that's probably going to be judged on the merits of your idea, but if you want to hand them out...
It's not an idea. It's, it's a, it's a chronological rendering of a specific case that just happened to me in Oklahoma City. I gave, it's only the request to be heard before the council, and it's, it's a specific deal. It's not a, it's not an idea for anything. And one thing I would like to say, excuse me, concerning the sidewalk issue, I've spoken with some technical people at the ADA, and the curb cutouts satisfy the ADA as far as Oklahoma City being in compliance with the ADA. So I won't be submitting a 504 complaint, which I was prepared to do, but I don't do anything without just, you know, I, I look into it fully before I do it.
Sure.
But I tell you, I'd like to do this right, and whatever I need to do in order to present, this, this, this will take about eight to 12 minutes. It's, it's going to be longer than three. If I need to leave one set of these documents so you guys can review them and set it on the council, I'm, I'm prepared to do that.
Yeah, well, we just don't have time and items from council for you to do that. So if you want to pass those out...
No, no. I want to leave one and have it, have them reviewed and see if I can get them set on the docket so that I can address these, this issue specifically. If, if, if it's determined that you don't want these issues brought before the council, I ain't got no problem with that.
Okay.
Okay.
You can give it to me, or if you, if you choose to give it to Councilman Kelly, you can do that.
No, I'll give it to you.
Okay.
Matter of fact, I'll leave you two of them, so both of you guys can have one. This is serious business. It's ain't nothing, this ain't nothing can be done in three minutes.
Thanks.
I'm in constant contact with Debbie all the time, and I'll, I'll try and get an answer, one way or the other. Appreciate it. Thank you for our guys.
I appreciate you coming down, Roy.
All right. So nothing that I'm doing other than what, I got an old crazy saying that I have, in life, you're given opportunities to make a decision at every corner. You can do what God would have you do, you can do what you want to do. Nine times out of 10, doing what you want to do gets you in trouble, especially where I come from. We do what God wants to do. That's what this is about. God is pushing me to do this. It's ain't nothing crazy, but God is pushing me to do this because this needs to be out.
All right. Thanks, Roy. Ready to adjourn? We're adjourned.